One minute warning. Let me know when you're ready. Yeah, yeah, we got everybody in the room. Cool. If we can get council members to come up here. Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Jim, Jim will come, he's here, he's just going around. And so first step is to do roll call.
Councilmember San Antonio?
President?
Councilmember Schaefer?
Here.
Councilmember O'Hara, who's president? Do you have your line?
Here.
Here.
Record was shown that all members of this council are present.
If you can, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, tonight, and first of all, I apologize for the delayed start, but we had, we've had two meetings already for other subjects with, with other boards. And, and one went long, and so I apologize for that, but we are started, and we're gonna move as quickly through this agenda as we can, but have a full thorough discussion and full public comment. Our first step is, we have for item four, three special presentations, and we'll start with a presentation of proclamation to Richard Descom for his 50 years of service. Yeah. Yeah. Can you hear me? There we go. Can you hear me in the back? Yeah, okay. And I was wondering, how do you do 50 years at a city that's 40 some years old? Come on up. What's that now?
Pretty tough.
Pretty tough, but I'm, I'm impressed.
I was part of the crew, and there's guys out here that were in, working to get this place incorporated.
Oh, okay.
Knocking on doors and things like that back in the 80s, yeah.
Well, why don't you come, come on up here and join me, and, and we'll start out with, I'll start out with the proclamation. So this is a proclamation of the city, and I'll read it. Whereas Richard Descom has dedicated more than five decades, which still, every time I read that, I go, wow, of his life to the service and safety of the residents of the city of Encinitas, beginning his career as a firefighter in 1975, when I was in high school, by the way. And whereas throughout the 50 years of service, Richard has exemplified unwavering commitment, bravery, and leadership, becoming a trusted and admired figure within the fire department and the community at large. And whereas in recognition of his exceptional performance, courage, and dedication, Richard has, was named Fireman of the Year in 1988, an honor reflected, that reflected his extraordinary contributions to fire safety and emergency response. And whereas through his volunteer work, Richard has continued to educate the public on fire safety practices and serve as a beacon of dedication. And whereas when Richard isn't donning his fire prevention volunteer hat, he can be found marveling at the world of world-class coin collection, exploring the desert with an, his equally adventurous crew, working on his clock collection, and generously supplying his coworkers with a steady stream of chocolate bagels and jokes, chocolate comma bagels and jokes, that's not chocolate bagels, which have proven essential to team morale and breakfast satisfaction. And whereas the city of Encinitas grate, gratefully recognizes the enduring legacy, service, and volunteer spirit of Richard, whose selfless contributions had made our community safer, now therefore I, Bruce Ayers, Mayor of the City of Encinitas, along with all of the city council members, extend our deepest gratitude and heartfelt recognition in honor of his 50 years of courageous service, his continued volunteer efforts, and his lifelong commitment to protecting the residents of Encinitas. Thank you. And, 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 so, so apparently, so apparently the, the 50th is the axe, you know, it's like diamond, I guess for fireman it would be the fire axe, right? So wow, that is impressive. And would you like to say some words?
Thank you. The fireman thing is, when I came to work here, the applications said fireman, and I was a fireman, my badge says fireman on it, but they changed it in the 80s, I think about 86, 87, about they dropped fireman to firefighter, and I was just against that. So I consider myself a fireman.
Very good. Appreciate it. Thank you for, and to another 50 years. Because you're not quitting, right? This is not, this is not a retirement, folks. He's still gotta volunteer and work.
I see more years.
Yeah. Here, here. Oh, yeah, one, one more. I believe there's one more thing, and we'll get some pictures, and that is, and it's so hard to hold a mic and talk, but this is a 50-year service pin.
Wow, what's that?
Yeah, yeah. It's not as big as a fire axe, but it's well deserved. Yep. And there, but it, it's gorgeous.
I already have a picture.
So thank you and congratulations once again. Thank you. Now, if the city council will join me down here, and we'll get, whoa, whoa, Richard, before you run away, we need to get pictures. Yeah. And family can come up too, absolutely. Good.
Great. All right, one, two, three, I'm gonna take a couple of them, okay? One, two. All right. One, two. Woo-hoo! Is that a light bulb?
team. That, that's my opinion.
All right. Are you ready? Oh. And I'm also gonna take one. Look happy, you guys, come on. Okay, now this way. One, two, three, say firefighter, or fireman.
Can we give a round of applause for all of these firemen? Come on. Thank you. Yeah. Do you wanna bring them up now? Bring them all up. Parks and Rec, come on up. Come on, Dave. Any other Parks and Rec? Margaret? Are you coming? Yeah, are you? Parks and Rec. This is the fun part. Wow. I think it's the whole audience. You know, if, if it would have been quicker, I could have come down there to you. So, okay, this, this month, July, is Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Arts Month, and we have a proclamation for Parks and Rec today. So whereas Parks and Rec and Cultural Arts, or PRCA, is an integral part of the communities throughout the, this country, including Encinitas, and whereas PRCA enhances community where everything, everyone belongs by providing safe, vibrant, and environmentally healthy communities that make life better through positive alternatives offered in recreational and artistic opportunities. And whereas PRCA offer engagement and education for human development and endless learning opportunities that foster social, intellectual, physical, creative, and emotional growth in people of all ages and abilities. And whereas PRCA promotes health and wellness, improving physical, emotional, and mental health through organized and self-directed fitness play and activity. And whereas PRCA create community character and memorable, memorable experiences through summer camps, senior activities, cultural arts, enrichment programs, fitness, community events, support of youth sports organizations, and beyond. And whereas parks, beaches, trails, and recreational facilities provide safe spaces fostering social cohesiveness by celebrating diversity, providing spaces to come together peace, peacefully, and ensuring all people have access to their benefits. And whereas PRCA maintains and operates over 328 acres of parkland, wow, 20 unique community parks, three sports parks, a world-class skate park, and a two-acre off-leash dog park, along with maintaining 10 miles of streetscape, 90 acres of open space, 33 acres of beaches, and 41 miles of trails. And whereas parks, beaches, trails promote environmental health of our natural resources by protecting habitats and open space, connecting people to nature, and promoting the ecological function of parkland. And whereas PRCA created, create opportunities for the creation, celebration, and appreciation of the arts through a multitude of mediums, including but not limited to music, dance, theater, public art, events, and installations. And whereas PRCA practice fiscal stewardship by supporting the economic vitality of communities by partnering with local businesses and nonprofits to offer events for residents, residences, engagement. And whereas the city of Encinitas recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation and cultural arts resources, now therefore, I, Bruce Ayers, the mayor of Encinitas, the city of Encinitas, along with the city council members, do hereby proclaim July 2025 as Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Arts Month in the city of Encinitas. Thank you.
Do you wanna get everyone in the photo, please? Yes.
One down.
You're gonna have to squeeze in. Yeah. Hey, is everyone ready? All right. Okay. One second. Say cheese. Perfect. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Come on down.
So we, we split this celebration kind of in two, because we actually did the flag raising one afternoon, but we didn't, we didn't, I think timing with people being available for the proclamation, so the proclamation is tonight, normally we'd do them on the same day or pretty close, but today we, we're doing them separate, separated by a couple of weeks. So as we celebrate and declare June as Pride Month in Encinitas, we are reminded that this June, we stand with the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer community in our own city, as they declare their own pride in who they are and who they love. So I'll read the full proclamation. Whereas the city of Encinitas has a diverse lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer LGBTQ community, and it is committed to supporting visibility, dignity, dignity, and equality for all people in the community. And whereas many of the residents, students, employees, and business owners within the city of Encinitas, who contribute greatly to the enrichment of our city, are part of the LGBTQ community. And whereas, though there has been remarkable progress towards equality in recent years, members of the LGBTQ community in the, in the United States and around the world still face an unacceptable level of discrimination and violence, and therefore it is important for cities such as the city of Encinitas to stand up and show support for those affected. And whereas our nation was founded on the principle of equal rights for all people, but the fulfillment of this promise has been long in coming for many Americans. And whereas some of the most inspiring moments in our history have arisen from civil rights movements that have sought to bring marginalized communities to the mainstream of American society. And whereas North County LGBTQ Resource Center, whose mission is to serve and empower the diverse LGBTQ community of North, North San Diego County, has been open for 17 years. And whereas the annual Pride by the Beach Festival was celebrated on June 7th in 20, of 2025, and is recognized as a free community event. And whereas the North County LGBTQ Resource Center was founded in 2008, along with, with its North County pride, that is Pride by the Beach, and has been an advocate for equality and inclusiveness while providing valuable support and lifesaving services to all the North, North San Diego County region, now therefore be it resolved that I, Bruce Ayers, Mayor of the City of Encinitas, and the entire city council of the City of Encinitas, on behalf of all residents of the City of Encinitas, do hereby proclaim the month of June as LGBTQ Pride Month in the city of Encinitas, and invite everyone to respect, honor, and celebrate our diverse community, and to continue building a culture, culture of inclusiveness and acceptance for the LGBTQ community. Thank you. And would you like to say something?
For the other supporters, come on up and get a picture with us. I just wanted to say the North County Center is, has been open for 17 years, and as we support the LGBTQ community and for equality, the whole community benefits. And we'd like to invite you this weekend to Lucadia Pride, it starts at 2 o'clock, it's the second annual Lucadia Pride, built from residents right here in the city. And I've been humbled and honored to accept this proclamation and see the flag raised in my city since 2018, and so thank you to Mayor Ellers, and thank you to the rest of the council for the proclamation tonight.
Thank you.
Any gaps? Yeah. Perfect, okay. I'm gonna take a couple photos. One, two, three. Thank you so much. Thank you.
How many do we have?
We have seven.
Seven, excellent. So we'll do the full three minutes, and we'll start with oral comments.
All right, I'm gonna call you three at a time, and just a reminder that oral communications is the time to speak and address the city council on items that are not listed on the agenda. So the first three speakers, Christine Schindler, Brad Lefkowitz, and then Natalie Satun.
Hey there again, so Christine Schindler, I live in East Encinitas. So you got a break from me last week, I went to city council in Solana Beach instead. So just a, a couple of things, I certainly wanna start with appreciation. So I told myself several months ago, I would come once a month and make sure that I did an appreciation slide, so a few of these folks were just there for the Park and Rec acknowledgement. I'm continually pleased with our city staff, and I just wanna make sure that they feel appreciated and respected, so. I showed this a week or so ago, because I live in East Encinitas, and I move around a lot on a bike, walking, and car, in that order, I see a lot of space that I hope will get repurposed. So I wanna make sure that the El Camino Real specific plan and the work that's done today carries forward, and I think this is an important part of our city and an important corridor, not only in the, the business district part of it, but then certainly from Encinitas Boulevard all the way to I-5. I don't see it as a car-centric corridor. That's what it is now, but I think it can be transformed, and I sure hope that it will, if not with this council, with our next council. So I just wanted to show these slides, because there's a lot of parking lot space, there's a lot of wonderful open space, and it can, it can become so much more as far as housing and greenways and multi-use recreating parking lot area. So I wanted to again invite you and the community to our next Encinitas Bike Walk Community Gathering. This time it's actually gonna be a walk and a bike on the same day, so I hope you'll come join us. It is along the El Camino Real Corridor, where a lot of kids and adults ride and walk, and it's a multi-use path that people may or may not know about, and we just wanna make sure that we let people know about it and enjoy it with them. So there's been things said before, and things said today during the special joint meeting about creating route maps, and I just wanted to mention again that this is something that's in process and has been for a while, and I'll stop there.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Brad Lefkowitz, D4, Chair of UFAK and new graduate, graduate of Encinitas Academy, which I highly recommend, it was a fun way to spend a couple of weeks. It's nice when I prepare two minutes and I have three, I can relax a little bit. There's been a lot of talk about transparency and conflicts of interest lately, so I'd like to address that in a few ways tonight. First, tomorrow night at 5:30, right next door, UFAK will be discussing proposed updates to our mature tree ordinance. You can review the agenda and the hard work of our volunteer subcommittee on the website, thanks to staff for making that happen. We'd really value public input as we debate whether and how the ordinance should apply to private property and govern what people can or can't do with mature trees on their land. It's a tricky topic, and if you're not able to come tomorrow night, it looks like the written comments are coming in as well, I saw those on the website, so we'd love to hear from anybody. Next, I want to talk about another issue of transparency. Sitting council members promoting anonymously created political content on social media. For anyone in our city that spends time on Instagram, it's hard to miss the comical number of anonymous accounts on all sides of the spectrum, purporting to cover city issues. Of course, it's a free country, free internet, people have every right to do what they want, but to the owners of those accounts, I just ask, if you're proud of your work, if you stand by the information you're putting out, why not put your name on it? That's what we've done with the Parents of USD account, we use our names, we use our faces, and many people have thanked us for that. That's merely a suggestion, but I do have an ask for our sitting council members. Don't use your official accounts, or in council member, council member O'Hara's case, his business account, to share or boost political content that is anonymously posted. Your promotion of and potential coordination with these anonymous accounts is completely at odds with the calls for transparency we've heard you make from the DIAS. The fix is easy, stop promoting that content, or if you continue to do so, be open about who's creating it. Otherwise, we have no way of knowing if potential conflicts of interest are in play. With that, I thank you for your time. I think we're all looking forward to the summer break. Councilmembers Schaefer and San Antonio, we're long overdue for a beverage, you know how to get ahold of me. I'm gonna go home and hang out with my kids, good luck tonight, I think it might be a long one, we'll see how you do. We'd really value public input as we debate whether and how the ordinance should apply to private property and govern what people can or can't do with mature trees on their land. It's a tricky topic, and if you're not able to come tomorrow night, it looks like the written comments are coming in as well. I saw those on the website, so we'd love to hear from anybody. Next, I want to talk about another issue of transparency. Sitting council members promoting anonymously created political content on social media. For anyone in our city that spends time on Instagram, it's hard to miss the comical number of anonymous accounts on all sides of the spectrum purporting to cover city issues. Of course, it's a free country, free internet, people have every right to do what they want. But to the owners of those accounts, I just ask, if you're proud of your work, if you stand by the information you're putting out, why not put your name on it? That's what we've done with the Parents of USD account. We use our names, we use our faces, and many people have thanked us for that. That's merely a suggestion, but I do have an ask for our sitting council members. Don't use your official accounts, or in council member O'Hara's case, his business account, to share or boost political content that is anonymously posted. Your promotion of and potential coordination with these anonymous accounts is completely at odds with the calls for transparency we've heard you make from the DIAS. The fix is easy. Stop promoting that content, or if you continue to do so, be open about who's creating it. Otherwise, we have no way of knowing if potential conflicts of interest are in play. With that, I thank you for your time. I think we're all looking forward to the summer break. Council members Schaefer and San Antonio were long overdue for a beverage. You know how to get ahold of me. I'm gonna go home and hang out with my kids. Good luck tonight. Think it might be a long one. We'll see how you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to address that.
Within, I mean, we can't respond per se and discuss it?
Okay.
We can refer to staff.
Go to my Instagram page and see the last time I posted anything. The election. So my business page, I don't know, but my business isn't promoting the city. My business promotes my business, that's what I do. So.
Okay.
Next speaker is Natalie Satun. She'll be followed by Scott Campbell, Peggy Walker, and then Dave Dean.
Hi, Natalie Satun. First, I have some audio from the May 14th meeting.
I'm here tonight to ask you all to be leery of staff recommendations and question every recommendation that comes your way. All of this was done by joy to our city manager seemingly without your knowledge, Marco, Jim, Luke, and Bruce. I can find no evidence of the four of you being included in any of these changes. Be very cautious that you're being undermined while one council member is directing staff to satisfy her own political agenda.
This is a reminder that what you see and hear from staff, a colleague, or your own city attorney is not to be trusted. Staff reports often contain misleading data due to underlying agenda politics. I've seen this multiple times from traffic engineering, parks and rec, and development. Jennifer, you have a problem that needs to be addressed.
The sheriff has issued approximately 182 citations over the past several years.
This is an email from Captain Watts on June 4, the day of his presentation to you. This confirms the 182 citations from January 1 of this year. Captain Watts asserted that there could be additional numbers that were not fully extracted. My PRA from SDSO supports Captain Watts' confirmation. Not only does your city attorney attempt to minimize the citations and hard work of Captain Watts deputies, but he misled you that these 182 citations were over multiple years. If Tarquin unequivocally knew they were solely... From the first five months of 2025, this would be different. In addition, had Tarquin fulfilled my very delinquent PRA from April 17 that I've continued to request multiple times and verbally do so again tonight, please do so. I would like my PRA. This would be fresh in his recollection that these belong to 2025. I stand by my words that this council and our city manager as well is being undermined, and we taxpayers have substandard legal representation. Thank you. If you have any questions, you can ask Captain Watts about the 182. He's here tonight. Thank you.
Scott? Scott Campbell, Peggy Walker, Dave Dean, and then Ellen Burke.
Let's just say that Mobility Commission was a little bit off topic. So we need some levity here. Tonight is the last day of council for the fiscal year. It's like the last day of school. It should be celebratory, not so accusatory. On the way here, I did drive by the dog park, and I saw a Dalmatian Marmaduke. I didn't even know they existed, this dog. I mean, it was unbelievable. But what was better was, as I was driving by, the huge fire truck came out of the fire station, and it was following me. I said, "No, I know where this fire truck's going." I pulled over and let him pass, and I followed him in. And we're on Vulcan, there was, you know, this is mobility-related. There was a bike rider with a, and he weren't kids, and a woman on the back, and the truck mashed the kids, he passed them. And where's legal? Where's single dotted? And we got to the stoplight, and I reprimanded the kids. I said, "You know what? Where's your helmets?" They didn't have helmets on. They weren't kids, they were above 20. They didn't have helmets. And then another huge fire truck pulled in behind me. So that relates back to the proclamation. So let's get back to what we're talking about here. I have pride in my children getting a doctorate degree. I have pride when people ask me where I live, and I instantly say, "I live in Encinitas." I don't say, "I live in San Diego." I don't say, "I live in California." I say, "I live in Encinitas." And with that, I'd like to ask Dave Kump here. We had a flag raising ceremony. I was here earlier today, and I found this underneath the flagpoles, and I was very dismayed that this, and I have pride in my city too. And I'm gonna deliver this to the city manager here. Thank you, Dave. And this is all part of the flag stuff, and we shouldn't forget, we shouldn't forget our city. Thank you. I'm sorry, I washed it. It was pretty dirty. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just first want to thank you for the work that you do. These three agendas tonight are an indicator of the workload to carry, so thank you very much. My name is Peggy Walker. I'm with San De Guido Alliance for Drug-Free Youth, and our purpose is to raise awareness of the risks of underage alcohol, marijuana, and other addictive substance use. With summer and full spring, it's a time when youth are more likely to attend parties, and I came with the reminder that, for parents and for everybody, that Encinitas is a social host ordinance city, and that's a good follow-up to your traffic safety meeting. Social host means that it's every adult's responsibility to ensure underage youth are not consuming alcohol in your home or using marijuana. Well-meaning parents may consider hosting drinking parties on behalf of their children, but such gatherings can spiral out of control or result in post-party problems. Underage drinking is a factor nearly half of all teenage. Car crashes and the leading cause of death among teenagers. Many teens believe marijuana is safer than alcohol, but it slows motor control, memory, and concentration, and causes car accidents, and amongst its risks are also increased aggression, mood changes, and risk of psychosis. So I urge parents and all of us to remember that anyone hosting parties where alcohol is served or marijuana used is required to verify the age of guests, control underage access to alcohol or marijuana, and to supervise minors. The sheriff's website, thank you, Captain Watts, reminds us that those in a social host ordinance city who allow anyone under 21 to drink alcohol or ingest marijuana in any form in their homes can be cited, arrested, fined, or even served jail time. So I just want to thank you all for remembering that. We are a social host city, and thank you all for keeping our kids safe in their cars and on their e-bikes. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager, Dave Kope. The reason I'm here tonight is we're taught if we hear something or see something to say something. And this afternoon, I received a disturbing call from a friend of the, excuse me, a friend of the garden. And I was told that a certain individual near the garden was gonna be going to the garden this evening to cut down some of the trees in the garden. And the reason for this is apparently the trees interfere with his line of sight with Moonlight Beach. So I'm a little concerned and disheartened that this would happen. And I was told by this person who called me that they were also showing the, you can go to the next picture, how the tree was, were gonna be cut down with this saw right here. So hopefully that won't happen this evening, but I just wanted to share the news and say something, and we can go to the next one. And these are the trees that allegedly may be cut down tonight, I'm told. So I hope that won't happen. I let Dave Kope know about it, and Chief Watts too. He assured me he'll keep an eye on things there this evening also, but just wanted to say something, so that's all I got tonight. Thank you for your time, your service, and look forward to seeing you in the garden soon.
And so, we can't talk about this, but we can refer it to staff, and that's city-owned property, right? Yeah, so, okay.
I see Captain Watts nodding.
Okay. So those are city-owned trees, I guess is my conclusion.
Yes.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Thank you. Good evening, Council. Last week, it was ADUs, the fiscal and economic impacts and associated information. This week, it is the socio part. ADUs, according to information from the city, ADUs and JADUs provide housing opportunities within existing neighborhoods, creating housing that is already connected to the local character and infrastructure. The additional units help diversify the market for renters while providing supplemental income for homeowners and thus increasing affordability throughout Encinitas. I don't think that's exactly the case that we have discovered that we have. INLU fee is to provide funds for the city to develop and construct affordable housing as would otherwise be provided on-site and to mitigate the burdens created by residential development and the need for extremely low, very low, low, and moderate income housing. Again, not working so well. But the worst part of this is when both of these, the incentive and the INLU fee come together, and that the loopholes and allowances are abused by people who want to build a huge ass house on a little lot, that they can do that instead of going the regular route and saying, "I want to build a 5,000-square-foot house, and I know I've got to keep it within X amount of setback and X amount of lot coverage." We can go instead and build a house that has an ADU that is essentially part of the house, that is maybe an office, maybe an executive suite, maybe a guest quarters, but that it is essentially a house. And believe me, when you get three or four of these in a neighborhood, which I believe most people would think would be, depending where they live, one or two blocks by one or two blocks, it does completely change the character of the neighborhood, because we are now talking about three, four, five extra families per house possibly, if there's three units. So, and there's no parking requirement, so we're losing parking. So it's not fair to the people who have all along and continued to go, and it really does, unlike it takes 10 years to affect neighborhood character, it's in another part of a report. No, absolutely not. It can change practically overnight. And I totally understand if you spend a million dollars on a lot, you want to cover it, but something needs to be done because it's not having the effect that we want it to have. Thank you.
That concludes oral communications.
Okay. And with that, we'll move on. Report from closed session? We did not have a closed session, so there is none. Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to the closed session. And then moving to the consent calendar, item 8G has been removed from the number of the public and by the staff report, and then item 8H has been removed by Councilmember San Antonio.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion for everything but 8G and 8H.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second. And I'll wait for the computer to catch up. And we will vote.
Motion carries unanimously. That takes us to item 8G.
I'm sorry, we were shuffling up here. Did you say you wanted a report?
I believe so. I think the public wanted the report.
Perfect, okay.
Okay, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council and the public. Brief presentation I have this evening, a few slides about item 8G, which is our bicycle safety education program. Obviously, you have the report, and I'm happy to answer any questions about the report as well. So our, what you have in front of you tonight is our MOUs for our school bike safety education program. That's MOUs with both the Encinitas Union School District and the San De Guido Union High School District. The Encinitas Union School District program, we've run for a couple of years now. Last year's highlights were that we had more than 4,000 students attend bike safety assemblies and over 200 participate in on-bike activities to further that education. That program provides consistent education important for children in all grades, whether biking, walking, or perhaps now or in the future. The San De Guido MOU covers those similar type of programs, age-appropriate for that group, so tend to be more on-bike or webinars or assemblies. That program was new in the school year 24, 25, and approximately 300 students were served through that program last year. By design, the structure of that program for both the MOUs is that the city and the districts work together to decide upon what type of programs are most appropriate for their students to meet their needs, and then it's on the district to source and contract their bicycle safety education provider, and that responsibility's on the district, and then the city reimburses the cost of that agreed-upon bike safety education. That provider, both districts last year contracted with the San Diego County Bicycle Coalition, who provide a lot of education across the region. They're subject matter experts in that space, all of their instructors being League of American Bicycleists certified instructors. And the type of programs offered include assemblies, webinars, on-bike classes, and other activities. Sorry, I'll pause there. Happy to answer any questions you have about those programs.
I had one question. You made the comment that the high school district was new in 24, 25, but I think the report's 23, 24.
Yeah, I misspoke. We started that program kind of mid-23, 24.
And that was the 11,650 that year?
Correct.
I just was different from what you'd written in the report.
Yeah, the last year was the, this past year was the first complete school year that they had that program in place.
Okay, cool. No other questions? We have a public member. How many speakers do we have? Three?
First speaker is Rachel Graves with time donation from Natalie Satun, who was present, followed by Ron Meddak, and then Christine Schindler.
Good evening, Council, and thank you Mobility Manager Nick Buck for clarifying a couple of questions I had. I appreciate the opportunity to share my perspective regarding this memorandum of understanding, particularly as it pertains to open government. Allow me to emphasize that I have no reservations about the merits of this proposal, educating our youth on bicycle safety and fostering safe cycling throughout our city, especially in routes to and from school, our objectives we all wholeheartedly support. But however, I am compelled to express concerns about the manner in which the agenda item has been presented. It is important to note that San Diego County Bicycle Coalition operates in alliance with a list of local bike walk organizations, including Bike Walk Chula Vista, Coronado, Del Mar, Encinitas, Escondido, Oceanside San Diego, Solana Beach, and Vista. I could only find Vista listed with our county, on our county business site. While the MOU may indicate that the San Diego County Bicycle Coalition is providing bicycle instruction and assemblies, I instruction and assemblies, I urge a commitment to full transparency. It appears to me that in reality Bike Walk Encinitas is the primary provider of these courses, yet as Bike Walk Encinitas is neither a certified nonprofit nor a recognized legal entity in California, questions arise about the organization's leadership, its insurance coverage, compliance with necessary documentation for working with our youth in the city and state of California. Week after week at city council and during various commissions and committee meetings, a representative from Bike Walk Encinitas addresses topics ranging from road construction concerns to critiques sometimes pointed at council members. Most recent, and this person also tells us that she runs these meetings, or these bike instruction and assemblies. Most recently, there was criticism regarding the pulling of consent items, a process entirely permissible under Robert's Rules of Order and one that I exercise myself as a citizen. Last week, the youth commission, at the youth commission meeting, a Bike Walk, the same Bike Walk Encinitas representative delivered a 23-minute presentation to our youth, a presentation that notably was not made available to the public prior. During this session, the representative voiced disagreement with council decisions on issues such as the Santa Fe project. While no council member was named explicitly, it was stated that the representative had indeed met with one of you guys and expressed their disagreement with you, also mentioned to others. Furthermore, in committee meetings with school district officials, she has cautioned that, quote, "The new council will likely roll back certain safety measures." My concern is significant. This individual is slated to deliver now 16 assemblies to our schools. While promoting bicycle safety is an admirable goal that I do appreciate, it is vital that these presentations remain free from political activism and refrain from introducing our children to one-sided viewpoints. Indoctrination intentional or not, is particularly problematic when it occurs under the guise of educational programming. We're actually seeing this in our own school districts right now, in the news, in the courts. I urge you to review all of the assemblies that are being put on at these schools. If the content mirrors the content that our city manager also watched of the youth commission presentation, I believe it warrants your attention. There are claims made and statements presented as fact, which in my view are exaggerated or inaccurate, and young people should not be made to feel shame for holding different perspectives or for simply being driven to work by their working parent. It seems that when engaging in outspoken criticism or activism, the organization presents itself as Bike Walk Encinitas, but when requesting funds or formal support, staff then assigns the identity of the San Diego County Bicycle Coalition. For the sake of integrity, accountability, trust from your community, I respectfully urge the council to ensure transparency and do their due diligence in these proceedings. Our children and our city deserve nothing less. Thank you.
And then now we only have two speakers, and the second speaker is Christine Schindler.
So Christine Schindler, East Encinitas. I am a league cycling instructor. I speak up here during council, during commission meetings. As a resident, I don't speak on behalf of Encinitas Bike Walk, though I am part of that group. I work in many cities in North County. Some of it I get paid for, a lot of it is in kind. The city contracts with the San Diego County Bike Coalition. They contract with league cycling instructors to do bike rodeos, to do city cycling classes, to do assemblies. It has nothing to do with Encinitas Bike Walk. That's, we're an advocacy group. We do some education, but not this type of education. So, perhaps she was referring to the youth commission. I did come to the youth commission. I'll review the video. I don't think that I said the things that she said I said. So Rachel was talking about me. I've said many, many times during city cycling classes, here at council, in public, to my neighbors, City of Encinitas is doing more than any other jurisdiction. We're partnering with more school districts than other jurisdictions. One of the things that I thought maybe she was going for, but I'll just clarify, Safe Routes to School, you do a lot of work with elementary schools. That's how it all started. Thankfully, we've expanded, and we're now doing work with middle schools as well. And I say "we" because, I mean, it's the city, but I like to support things that are being done in Solana Beach, Encinitas, Carlsbad, Oceanside, as well as downtown and other cities. So we're doing elementary, we're doing middle school, and what's great in Encinitas is that we're actually doing that middle school age. We're doing some things at high school, but the school district hasn't embraced to push it out there, the, have to get education to get a bike parking permit to ride to school. They're not wanting to manage that for all the high schoolers, even though half of them don't drive cars yet. It is a mini driver's ed. So, I want to support Nick. As our mobility manager, I want to say thank you to the city once again for doing as much as you are, and the school districts as well. So, thank you.
Okay. That was it? Anybody want to speak, or? Deputy Mayor?
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the recommended action. This is an MOU with the school districts that has been really needed and successful over many years. And so I'll move the recommended action.
Councilmember O'Hara. So a substitute motion?
Substitute motion. And it's actually, this is, I think this is on staff, and mine has nothing to do with the content of the discussion between our residents. But mine is based on the quality of report that we received here. It's a two-page report. The analysis includes no bids for estimates from other organizations, or regard that we searched for other organizations. I happen to know there are others. I know on, what, 8L, where we just approved it, there were multiple bids done on that project, and while the projects are different, I'd like to think that staff is being overly responsible with the residents' money. I don't see any receipts. I don't see a budget that was put forward. I don't see a missing budget that information isn't available for me online. So my motion is to send this back to staff for a better presentation in the fall.
Okay. And I don't have a second on either the primary motion or the second yet. Any other comments from? I have a question for staff, if I can hop in. The, this is a grant to the school. Does the school do the contracting, or do we do the contracting with the San Diego Bicycle Coalition?
Correct. This is a reimbursement to the schools for their cost of bike safety education. Ultimately, it's up to the district to decide on a provider of that service. So in this instance, that would be on them. See, that's where that lies.
And do we pay 100%? Or, so we're offering to pay 100% of it? And, and the comment, one of the speakers made about, I think you said 300 students in the high school district, but those are primarily or exclusively junior-high students in Encinitas?
No, that was both middle school and high school as well.
Oh, there were high school?
Yeah. On that one, Sandag continues to offer some limited funding for programs for schools all over the county. It is a limited program, so they provide as equitably as they can across the county. So there were requests from Oak Crest and Indigano Middle Schools for programs within the school year, so those were kind of provided for, which meant a little bit less of a need for certain programs at the, at the middle schools through this program. So it saved us some money there. And also because of just the time that it takes to enter a contract agreements between the district and their provider, they didn't really get started until a little bit later in the school year, so they left some money on the table in this last year's program, but we intend to, you know, schedule that an entire...
So, we don't split the same program? We actually have separate programs from some Sandag-funded efforts at the same schools?
Yeah, I'm just saying that the schools themselves could potentially tap that limited funding for a small amount of the programming that they might need. Our MOU covers what we think is the adequate amount of educational opportunities for both of the districts. And then, yes, it's a reimbursement of those costs, so they submit receipts two times a year and we reimburse.
And do you get any feedback on the contracting that the schools do? In other words, do they bid it out? Do you know the process that they follow on this expenditure as part of our, in response to our MOU?
I can't say what their processes are in terms of, you know, what they're looking at as potential providers of the service. Just speaking for, you know, kind of in the landscape within our region, the Bike Coalition is hired by many, many or most municipalities, and even up into Orange County. They're not uniquely positioned, but pretty close to it with the number of certified instructors that they have kind of available and on the roster to teach these programs. And with their programs, the subject matter, the curriculum is kind of developed and owned by the Bike Coalition, so that's what's presented by their instructors. So, haven't seen too many other providers that are, that have come with any interest in providing at that scale.
Okay, and these are all certified by the League of American Bicycleists? Did you, I still have you up, Councilmember O'Hara. Did you want to speak again, or?
Yeah, I just, again, it would be nice to have all the information. I don't have it, and you're asking me to make a financial decision on information I don't have.
Anyone else? I have two unseconded motions. I will second the first motion, and, because I do support this, and, and I do understand the desire for greater, greater clarity or greater, I would be willing to entertain on my second, an addendum, or if the motion maker would agree, to ask that before we execute this, that staff get clarity on the bidding process from, but ultimately, the bidding process is the school district's, not ours, and, and I, you know, I have to be careful on how far I go, but I think we, it's reasonable to ask. And if we were talking huge numbers, you know, we're talking 16,000 for SDU, UHSD, and 30,000 for EUSD, which is the same as we allocated last year. I'm trying to find a middle ground here.
I don't have a middle ground. A dollar's a dollar, whether it's a million dollars or a dollar. Somebody worked for it somewhere, it has a value, and we need to treat it as such. And I think staff should, staff should provide us with that information. And I'm for the bike education program, I'm for everything to go forward, but I'm not confident voting without the right information. I think that should be brought to us, and not just this occasion, every occasion. This just happens to be the thinnest packet in the book, and it got polled, so I'm pointing out something that I see everywhere. And I felt comfortable saying, let's do this, let's do this in August, and let's get a good packet together so we can do. I think, I think for what I've heard tonight, I'd like to see the MOU adjust it as well.
How so?
I think we'd like to determine the terms of what that relationship is. From what I'm hearing, a clarification of defined, defined, what would you call it, guardrails or parameters, the interaction of the city and these organizations, because I'm hearing a lot of stuff in here. I even heard we throwing around, and I'm not sure who we were talking about when, when the person was up there. So, and I, you know, I've got Nick saying what we think happened about one of the things, but no clarification on it. So I just think it's an incomplete report, and we're voting on an incomplete report. Again, it's a financial decision, I don't have the information on. I don't go to the register at the supermarket to buy a carton of milk without any idea what it costs. And then, when they pull it up on the register, I just buy it. Like, if it pulls up on the register and I don't, you know, I look before I go, I pick it up off the shelf.
It's not a price issue. You're saying it's the bidding process issue and how the school district selects their vendor?
I'm saying we actually have no idea. We don't have the information. This is an incomplete report with not the information and analysis to actually make a responsible decision on.
Yeah. And, and I think I would argue that it's actually not our process completely, that it is a joint process to a degree, but we're contracting with the school, and I'm looking for a specific adjustment to this MOU that we could do that would enable our staff to go get that information for us. So, and I'm looking for that suggestion. Is it?
To me, the suggestion is bring it back in August. Do the work we've talked about tonight, bring it back in August.
And how would the MOU differ?
I think we, I think we'd have to talk about what the parameters are. When, we need to certainly clarify at this point now, based on discussion of both sides of that, when, when we are wearing what hat with these organizations and what that means. It's a separate subject, but I think it needs to be defined out within the parameters of the contract of this, what that looks like.
Okay. So, Councilmember San Antonio, you have your button pushed.
Well, I guess, you know, man, it's a hot-button word for me. It just flags it for me, so I guess, you know, fiscal responsibility, again, we did a great job with our budget. For me, that's, that makes sense to me, just to at least come back with, you know, I would second.
So you second the substitute motion? So, okay. And so we handle this?
And, just for the fiscal responsibility, just that it flagged me, so I'm like, okay, I'll...
No, no, I seconded Joy's first one. There was no second yet on the substitute motion. We just got the second on the substitute motion, which we handled before we go back to the original motion. If the second, my understanding of Robert's rules is if the substitute motion passes, then we're done. If fails, we drop back to the primary motion, if the parliamentarian will.
Correct.
Correct. Okay, cool.
Quick question for Nick. Nick, what's the difference for the school district if this money gets to them in August, or are we to make a decision in August? So, how does that work for them?
Yeah, thanks. When, you know, if and when an MOU is approved by council and we execute, then they take, the districts each take that to their board at their next scheduled meeting for their board to approve basically the entering into that agreements, and then also the funding on their end, because they, they have to pay the bills and then get reimbursed. So until that happens on their end, they wouldn't be able to enter any kind of agreement with whatever provider to then be able to start scheduling out and kind of planning their year.
Yeah, and when do they normally do this class? I'm assuming the first couple of weeks?
Yeah, I mean, ideally, we're into this pretty close to the start of the school year, once they settle in after the start of school, so we have programs in place.
Correct. The thing for me is obviously, we want this for the kids. I think what I, that the timing is crappy, because it's our last meeting before we go on recess before August, so we want the money to get there, but at the same time, I think the question is, is it's their process, but it's our money. And ultimately, we've got to make sure that the way that they end up spending this money is, is fair to the process by which there isn't some kind of, for lack of a better term, there is somebody, an interloper, that's either manipulating the system or using the system to their favor. That's inherently what we ran against, right? Like, to make sure there was transparency on all these accounts. So, I think the stipulation that you put in there, something of that nature, to make sure we get this work done and that this is the last time this happens, or something of that nature, but I don't want to hold up the kids, the ones that are being affected positively. So, I think I would probably support the first motion, but just make sure that this is the last time that this is, like, we have all of this information, like, how these people plan on spending it is exactly what we hear up here before it goes. Doesn't matter where it is in the city or how it goes, but that's, that's what we're here for. I mean, one of the primary things we're here for is to double-check how we, but really ultimately, the staff is effectively making these things go and making the engine run. And so, I think I would support with that subsequent, that if there's any more teeth that we can put into it to make sure this is the way going forward, that, the full report, the stuff that we just talked about, is in all the information that we have up until yesterday and not different when we ask questions type thing, so.
And so we'll vote. I'll recognize you next. We'll vote on the substitute motion first. If it passes, we're done. If it fails, then we'll drop back to the original motion. Deputy Mayor Lyons? Deputy Mayor Lyons.
I don't want to hold up the kids either. I think them getting the, the training before and at the right time, when they're going back to classes and meet all the requirements of having training in order to ride their bikes to school. There's a lot of kind of other things that are tied to this, such as, you know, how the kids are able to get the permission to ride their bikes to school, having, they have to pass the training. And so if we end up pushing that back, I would think that's unfortunate. A lot of times when there's something like this, this item in consent, a lot of the city council may not know all the details. And we try to use our staff briefings to say, and I, I think this is pretty customary. I know I use my staff briefings to say, I don't have the information I need in this area and in this area. And our city manager makes sure that not only we get that, but that it's added to the item so that the public sees it too. I would have liked to have seen this go that way so that we wouldn't end up considering delaying the approval. So that's really why I want to, I still stand behind the motion. But I'm thinking also, what information might there have been provided? So I can picture that the district might give us, well, the, last year, this is who we hired and this is what we paid them. And they taught these many classes. And this was the compensation different for different providers, maybe based on how many classes. And they, I'm sure they keep the data on how many students go to that class and how many pass. Maybe that's tied to other things that are associated with the safety around the campus. But I'm just picturing that's the kind of data that we might be able to get from them. Nick, you've probably seen this from them. Is that it?
Yeah. You know, there's certainly, we meet and communicate with the districts regularly. We have our key points of contact for this bicycle safety education at both districts. And so I think that's reasonable to, for sure, to ask for an accounting of, you know, what was, what was done, what, you know, programs that were held, attendance, you know, the impact. The MOU does call for like basically an annual just reporting of the successes and the value of the program. We could look to beef that up to, you know, I don't know what's appropriate to ask for on their end in terms of any contractual arrangements with a provider, et cetera. I don't have that answer, but we can certainly look to provide council with, you know, better kind of summary data for their consideration as we go into these.
And I'll keep the floor here just to add a comment. I think that's fair. It's fair for us to ask for that. I, in order to not delay this though, I'd like to recommend that this be provided to city council as information after, if we do vote this forward. But also in the future, that that, this information be provided to the city council so we have full transparency.
So, Councilmember O'Hara.
So.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Yep. So the question here is, one, we, I think we would have asked these questions in our briefing, but it was brought to our attention tonight. So that was the big part of not being able to ask those questions. But I think that what I heard, at least in the first, the first speaker's comments was that there's some manipulation of, of not just the information, but shaming somebody for not, for not riding their bike to school when their parent has to drive them to school or something like that. Or that's what I, at least what I heard. And I can't confirm or deny that. I just, I'm hearing that from a citizen. So I think that that's, we're making sure that the vendor that they're using isn't overly involved in any one way or another to influence a child in a, in a not so appropriate manner, if that makes sense. We're talking about bike safety, facts of the matter, not, not somebody's opinion. And that has to be clear. So this isn't about a dollar amount. To me, it isn't. It is, I appreciate that every dollar counts, but in this regard, it's, it has to do with making sure the information being passed is not manipulated in any stretch of the matter. And so that's kind of making sure that when they go to a same person. So if we looked at the history of this, even though it's a year old, year and a half, if this was a five year and they use the same person over and over and over again, and that person's manipulating the information, then, then we have a problem. And they can keep doing it on their, on their own dime, but that means that we stop, maybe a majority would stop using our dime. And if the, if the Encinitas one, the school district wants to continue, they'll have to find the funds on their own through Sandag or whatever. But as it's coming from us, we want to make sure the person presenting the information is not switching, changing, manipulating, or creating any value other than straight bike safety. And these are the routes that we highly recommend for you, for your parents, to be in the safest manner. So that for me is, from what I heard tonight, not knowing that that was in our brief. I liked the MOU. I liked what we had going. So I was full well willing to consent to it. Since it's been brought up, it's up to us to actually have the conversation about that.
So I'm up next. I was, I was going to call the question. So, but if, if Councilmember, you punched your button, that's why I was going to let you go first. All I was doing was calling the question on the substitute motion, but I'll yield to you now.
Do you have a social relationship with any instructors in this group?
I certainly know plenty of the instructors, you know.
Do you participate in activities outside of city hall with them?
No.
Never?
I don't think anything that's not work related, no.
We've had conversations to the contrary, but that would, that, you know, to pile on what, what Councilmember Schaefer just added, I think that that is, it kind of adds to the whole lack of this report. But I'm not going to push that anymore. I'm not interested in going down that road. It comes back to the, the lack of information on here for me. And that's really what this is all about. It, we don't have a report to know what we're voting on. I just keep going back to that. And so I'm going to let it roll there.
So, but you have a motion, a substitute motion and a second on, and I'll call the question on that one, if that's okay.
And I just, I just want to say, the, for me, the reason I can't support this, just because we were talking, Emory's family showed up tonight and all the supporters. And specifically, this is exactly what, we can't slow this down. I mean, this is, it's just inhumane at this point. It's for the amount of dollars, for what it is, it's just, I think the, I think the conversation's being had in public. Everybody can see, like, we expect more for the next report, period. That's, that's for me. So I'm going to vote against this one and for the original motion. But that's, that's me saying it out loud. So everybody, video, everybody can hear.
Yeah. And you, you're echoing what I'm, I'm thinking too.
Well, yeah. And I, there's no intention to not bring this program, bring the program to kids. There's no intention to not do that. And honestly, if we brought it back in the first week of August, I really don't think it would actually affect. I think that we heard that it's been brought back late anyways. But I think going forward, we've, we've made it crystal clear that whether it's a consent item or an action item, we need all the information once we walk, before we walk into that briefing, if it's available.
Yeah. I think to put a point on that, in the future, not this year, but next year, we want to understand the bidding process that, and, and what limits we, through our MOU on our money, can put on the school district so that they have open, public bids and we get the information back before we reimburse, in essence. And that's not part of the motion, but that's just, I think, putting a point on what the other council members were saying. So I think it was good, good discussion, but let's get, let's get moving on here. And so I'll call the question for the substitute motion.
So the substitute motion is O'Hara with a second by San Antonio. And this is to send the report back to staff to, for a more complete presentation with complete information at a city council meeting in August?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And so yes supports that motion, no is against the substitute motion.
So this is the substitute motion and it fails with Councilmember Schaefer, Lyons, and Ayers voting no. Give me a moment to get the other one back up.
And then that brings us back to the original motion.
And then that one was a motion by Lyons, second by Ayers, and that was to approve stack, staff recommendation. And then initially it was, but before execution, receive clarity on the bidding process. Was there more, did you want to add more to that?
I'm happy to add that to the motion. So staff recommendation and then more detailed information bef, what did you just say? Before?
Before execution of the contract.
Yes, thank you. That was a clarification.
I, I'll second that amendment to it.
And I think the amendment, Councilmember Schaefer was looking for was an amendment to the MOU to clarify the parameters of, of what is in the contract. The parameters of, of the extent of what is.
Being taught.
Being taught factually.
So as it, so as it comes, so like you're saying, so what if it comes back and it's unsatisfactory? What's our action? So do they, does it not go forward and it gets brought back in the future? See what I'm saying? So if we're going to find out the bidding process and the bidding process comes back and it's unsatisfactory?
The motion was, it would be information for us. And then.
Just information?
Yes, because.
They get it no matter what this time?
We would have already made the action, yeah. It would just be information, but I think there's value to that. I think, I think it's important that, because there's interest in it, that we have that information. And then in following years, it's added to the action.
Yeah.
And I would add to this, this, the MOU, that this be exclusively for cycling classes only.
And I think, my thought is, I want to get this year done. And, and we've made it very clear what we're looking for in the future and what we want in information back for this year. Next year, it should be a modified MOU with more teeth and more control over their bidding process, their vendor selection process, at least so that it's publicly clear and open. But for this year, we don't want to put a, slow it down. And I think that was a reoccurring method. So I wasn't changing the MOU this year.
Correct.
And I think, okay, yeah, I should say we or you aren't, and I'm agreeing with that. So with that, we'll call the question?
Question or clarification? So this is solely for bike classes? It's not for meetings with staff or other stuff?
This is the MOU for the bicycle safety education, the MOUs, I should say, with EUSD and then the MOU with SDU, SDU-HSD.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you for the clarification.
It's identified in the MOU specifically what it's for.
Yeah.
And then again, it's the recommended action and then direction to staff to provide clarity on the bidding process prior to execution of the contracts.
Correct.
Or the MOUs, excuse me.
Correct.
Okay.
And with that, we'll call the question.
And the motion carries with O'Hara abstaining and San Antonio voting no. Is that correct? Wait, hold on, hold on. It just went away. With O'Hara abstaining and San Antonio voting no.
Oh, the opposite. Okay, on to item 8H. And do you need a staff report?
I don't need a staff report. Actually, I just had a question. So for 8H, I just wanted to thank you and the staff for the MOU between EUSD and SDU-HSD. I'm super proud of the city and our commitment to getting kids to school safely. I know that last vote probably didn't seem like it, but 100% I do want that safe route to school. But I do know modifications have been made to the crossing guard program in the past with the number of guards and locations. In your expected opinion, is there, is our current current crossing guard program, is it fully meeting the needs of our community?
Thank you for the question. The crossing guard program, you know, when we got into it in 2019 with EUSD, that was based upon the requests of that district for the, the coverage that they were asking for, support for from the city. It expanded since that time in response to express concern about different locations and the proximity of schools. And in the last few years now, that's how the city has treated it, where when we get, you know, someone expresses concern, that kind of comes through the schools, often comes through the school district liaison committee. And then that kind of triggers a process where staff, sheriffs, and when I say staff, it includes myself normally, traffic engineering or traffic engineer, along with a sheriff deputy normally, and then a school official, which might be the principal, or might be along with the safety director. So we meet onsite to evaluate during peak times what that looks like. And if we think that there might be other solutions, it might be more engineering based, or it's an enforcement issue or anything else. And then if it seems like a valid reason to add a crossing guard to that site, then that's what we would do. We would then, you know, take that to the MOU and ask for approval there. So the, the program has expanded in the last few years to include a few more guards for EUSD over the years. And then this year, we add an additional guard for Santa Gita district. That was their first request in a little while. That added the third for, for that district.
Cool. Are there specific intersections or areas where you've observed a heightened need for additional support? I mean, I'm supportive of this. I'm just wondering if you need more help? Do you need more? I know we got more this year, but.
Yeah, we, we really leave it up to the schools to make their requests. They're the boots on the ground. They really experienced this day in and day out during the school year. So as those, you know, concerns are expressed and we talk to the appropriate people at the districts, we go from there. So I think that they're doing a really good job with assessing, you know, the safety around their schools and things happen and we respond. So I think we're in pretty good shape and we love the relationship that we have with our districts and that, you know, there's openness and really consistent communication between us. So I think we're in pretty good shape.
Okay. And then I had comments and questions too. I support this, but I do want to have a little word of caution and ask for an addition to future. You gave me the information during, during our briefing, but I'd like to see a table that shows the funding history and the number of guards. You know, I noticed it kept going up. Like this year, it's going up for EUSD by 13% from the previous year. But, and that wasn't just inflation. It turns out, I think when we had our discussion, that, that per guard, it's about 3%, so about the inflation rate. It's actually increased. And this, this program started back in 2019, as you said, with, with two guards for EUSD only and $18,000. Over the last, you know, seven years or six years or so, it's gone up to 193,000 with 14 guards total. You know, we started three years ago with SDSU with one guard, then the next year with two guards, the next year with three guards, and escalating prices accordingly. You know, the average cost per guard is around 14,000 per guard. And so as we keep adding. And so I think I understand why you're asking that question is, so one, I'd like to see future reports have that history and have the number of guards and then the cost per guard so we can monitor the inflationary pressure and also the, just the total, total budget. Because it took me a while to kind of go through the report and figure all this out. And I too am worried that next year, it's going to be 12 guards for EUSD and four guards for SDSU. And I support this. By the way, we're only paying 50% of the, the schools pay the other 50%. So I like that. I like shared costs because then they have pain equal to ours. I think it's a great program, but I've just been fiscally responsible and trying to understand, are we going to just keep getting an increment of one to two? We had one last year, two the year before added in EUSD and one each year in SDSU. And, you know, that tells me I kind of expect next year to have one more, which I won't necessarily say no, but I want the report to reflect that. So I think, kind of going back to the discussion we had about the previous item, this is an area where a little more information will give us all up here and the public, more importantly, an idea of what's happening and what's driving the cost increase. Because it's $200,000. That's, that's real money. So, but I support this. Do we have a motion on the table yet?
Motion to approve.
Oh, we have a public speaker. Sorry, I didn't know that.
I'll set the motion right now anyway. Motion to approve.
Okay. So we now have a motion. Let's get the public speaker in here.
Who's the second? San Antonio?
Oh, is that, who was the second? Okay.
San Antonio. And we do have Speaker Christine Schindler.
So I just wanted to, Christine Schindler, East Encinitas. I used to live in Solana Beach. And I just wanted to acknowledge how transformative crossing guards can be. So ACMS, which is the company that's used both in Solana Beach and here in Encinitas, kind of like the Bike Coalition with Bike Walk Safety, is kind of one of the, the only kids on the block. It, in Solana Beach, I just wanted to give you some context and then I want to. It, in Solana Beach, I just wanted to give you some context and then I want to appreciate the efforts made. In Solana Beach, it's along Loma Santa Fe in the I-5 corridor. Thankfully for most of our schools, we don't, that's not a big consideration. In Solana Beach, having crossing guards in that area was really instrumental for safer routes to school. And it was brought forward by a parent, Stacy Bastrum. Here, we have that for SDA, but most of our other schools are tucked into neighborhoods. However, it's kind of a safety in numbers and it gives parents a little bit of assurance to allow their kids to bike and walk, and I think it's huge. So I just want to appreciate that you've supported it in the past and it hopefully will be supported in the future. And it, I hadn't heard those numbers. I mean, it is pretty impressive how much it has expanded and the fact that it's expanded beyond elementary school kids. So I just want to say kudos to Nick and others for pushing this program forward into the school districts for their support as well. So, thank you.
Okay. And one last comment that I forgot was, are there grants? And in the future, could we go for grants for this program or could we go for grants for future programs?
Yeah, good question. And it's something that we'll continue to look for. Typically grants that are available, kind of piggyback on infrastructure projects and are limited to the training of guards. If you were to like, you know, for example, San Marcos School District, they employ their own guards. So potentially to like train a, you know, a staff of guards to do this work. It does not pay, there are no grants available to us that we know of right now that pay for the wages of crossing guard staff. So, but we'll, we'll be looking for that. Was there a second part to that question there? Sorry.
No, there wasn't.
Thanks.
Okay, with that, oh, I've got Councilmember O'Hara.
Well, mine was kind of along the line. I was going to ask about the grants, but I was also going to ask if we were looking to, this is obviously going to be a developmental, a development issue as we get the housing mandate dropping, homes everywhere, density everywhere. We're going to have, well, I think someone spoke about it, kids crossing Westlake and Encinitas Boulevard. Is this something we can develop a mitigation fee for? I know this housing mandate supporters say that there's not going to be any kids living in these new places and it's going to be all 50 and over. But I don't know, but I don't believe that. I think there's got to be some families living in these places. So I'm curious.
Thank you, Councilmember O'Hara. We can certainly look, as of right now, I know council received briefings on mitigation fees and we have a consultant. So I'm happy to ask the consultant if there is any type of mitigation fee for that or if the current mitigation fees that we do currently collect could be used for something like that. So we can bring clarification back to council on that item.
Super. And outside of that, you know, I think the community loves its crossing guards. I know a lot of friends were involved, like entire community, I should say. The entire community was involved in supporting through Polack, he wanted their crossing guards at HIGEA. And it was, I think the thing went viral. So we love our crossing guards and I'm, I'm glad it's got pulled just to have a chance to talk about it and say how great they are.
So with that, I've got a motion in a second. And it, it's basically approval of the
Staff recommendation.
Staff recommendation, so I don't think we need to read it, read it back. We'll call a question?
And that motion does carry unanimously.
Great. Okay, and that, we're now done with the consent calendar at 8:04. So we're on to item 10A.
And this item is to interview, we have two applicants for the youth commission. Every year, the city council does an annual recruitment. And at the May 14 city council meeting, the city council did appoint eight members to the youth commission. There were only eight applicants and there are nine spots. So we reopened that vacancy and we did receive two eligible applications. We do have one youth commissioner here tonight to speak. And then we do have one video comment from the second applicant. So I'll call up Lars Willing.
Good evening, council. My name is Lars Voging. I am honored to be considered for a spot on the Encinitas Youth Commission. I was born at Scripps Encinitas and I have lived here my entire life. I have grown up surfing Encinitas beaches and I love to bring family and friends to all the local spots to eat and shop on the 101. I am an honor roll student, a junior lifeguard, and I participate in community youth theater. I want to be involved with the council because I care about keeping Encinitas clean and safe. I want to protect our beaches, open spaces, and community. As a local, I see how important it is to take care of our community and protect what has made it so great. I believe the youth of Encinitas should have a voice and be part of the conversations that shape this city's future. I am ready to listen, to speak up, to learn, and to work to make sure Encinitas continues to be a place where the next generation can thrive. Thank you for your time and I hope to earn your support.
Thank you.
And then we do have a video from Miles Ue.
Good afternoon, mayor and city council members. My name is Miles Ue and I'm a junior at La Causa Canyon High School. Serving on the Encinitas Youth Commission this past year has taught me the true value of community. Community is what connects us and I believe it is one of Encinitas' greatest strengths. If selected again, I want to continue strengthening our community through meaningful events and activities for local youth and their families. I've volunteered over 200 hours at the Encinitas Library and have seen firsthand what an incredible space it is. I'd love to collaborate with fellow commissioners to host creative, hands-on programs for kids focusing on art, STEM, and other engaging outlets. As a guitar player, I understand how important the arts are for self-expression. I believe we should create more opportunities for young people to share their talents through music, art, and performance. I'm also a member of the Athletes for Hope High School Leadership Academy, which empowers student athletes to create positive change in their communities. Through this program, I helped connect underprivileged youth with sports scholarships. I'd love to bring similar ideas to the youth commission by organizing sports-related events and building programs that support youth athletics here in Encinitas. To reach underprivileged students, I've worked with Boost Program, a local nonprofit that provides essential resources to families. And I've volunteered at their events and designed their new website. I believe my tech skills could benefit the youth commission, especially in promoting events and improving outreach. I also volunteer with the EUSD Farm Lab for almost 50 hours, helping grow food for local elementary schools. It's a great example of how, of how people of all ages can give back in meaningful ways to the community. Finally, as a baseball player at La Causa Canyon High School, I've learned the value of leadership, teamwork, and perseverance. These lessons have shaped me into someone who can guide and support a team, skills I would bring to the youth commission. Overall, I'm passionate about giving back, bringing people together, and creating inclusive spaces for youth to thrive. I'd be honored to continue serving on the youth commission and contribute even more this upcoming year. Thank you for your time.
And then if you look at page two, it, it has the breakdown of the grades and who was appointed. And so just to prove for your consideration.
Okay, thank you. And this is one where the mayor nominates, so. Great, so I get the hard decision. Thank you.
Can we?
What now?
Can we? Can we take them both?
That's a good question.
Is that something we can do? I, two excellent, two very excellent options. I hate turning either away and, and I'm so impressed by the presentation of both of them. I'm impressed by their, their service to the city and their willingness to be of service to the city. And it seems to me like it'd be crazy to turn either one of these people away if that's something we can do.
Okay. And I think we've done that in the past. I don't know if staff wants to comment, but I, I know my history of watching this is when we did expand it, it got unwieldy.
Well, thank you, mayor, members of council. The, if I'm correct, and Director Knop is the, you know, in charge of the youth commission. But all of our commissions are established through municipal code. So currently it says that we have nine members. So you would first have to change the municipal code to then allow additional members. We've had, when I actually first started with the city, we had 17. That was a little unwieldy. So we, we did, we did whittle it down here and there. So we would need to go ahead and do that first.
Could we do that or, and if we wanted to keep it at nine, could we do like, similar to what we experienced at a lot of our subcommittees and commissions that we, that we, like NCTD, could we create an alternate? And so that one of these people could show up when it's eight people showing up and we need a ninth?
Thank you, Councilmember. I have seen that before. I've actually had commissions where we had like an alternate one, alternate two. But again, I think we still need to change the municipal code or I'm looking at the clerk.
I would ask this attorney if we could designate an alternate.
Come on, Tarquin.
I got to call like I see it. So unless it's in the municipal code that allows for an alternate, it's, the municipal code sets the members. So we can't change it on the dais without, change the municipal code, it needs to be done as, as an ordinance.
Okay. Anything else? Councilmember O'Hara? You have the floor.
Just really quick. Lars, you're going into eighth grade? Okay, and do we know, is Miles going into 12th grade and he just finished 11th grade? Or is he, he is going, okay, thank you. I yield a
Okay. Deputy Mayor Lyons.
I, I'm going to ask our leader of the youth commission a technical question, I think. So Miles is the incumbent. Do you happen to know, is this his first year serving? Can you remind me or?
Unfortunately, I don't have that answer for you. Is it on the list?
Okay. And kind of on, forward on to that, can you remind me how many terms the youth commissioners are eligible for? It's a one-year term?
It's a one-year, there are new, there are no term limits for the youth commission.
Okay, thank you.
Other than the age limit?
Yes, okay.
They basically age out often.
There were conversations in the past about the term limits for the youth commissioners. However, one of the deciding factors was that when students are applying to college, they're looking, not that you were on something for a year, they're looking for continuity of service. And so that was one of the considerations when the prior councils discussed term limits.
And I'll just, I'll just conclude with a comment. Whoever does not get selected for this one seat, then these are public meetings and people can attend. And it's a good way to stay involved and give public comment and give your thoughts to what the commission is doing. Thank you, I'll yield.
And to answer your question, it was Miles. He's served one term. He's just finishing his first term.
Okay, thank you.
And Councilmember San Antonio?
I am, your enthusiasm is definitely, I'm pumped. You got me pumped. It's, it's definitely, I like it. I mean, I, you got my attention, you kept it, and I like it. So I'm in support of Lars personally.
Okay, appreciate that.
Do we have, do we have a public comment on this or do we?
No, we do not.
Okay. So I'm going to, I'm going to make a motion.
No, it's actually my nomination.
Oh, no, so I'm going to, I'm going to make a suggestion
Okay.
to you. Is that based on this idea of continuity and how, how this commission serves the youth going forward? I, I would suggest that we take Miles. However, we bring back something on August, the first, first meeting to make Lars our alternate. He has time to serve on this committee, he can get his feet wet, learn how to do it. And I know that they're not going to have nine people at every meeting, so he's still going to be at every meeting. He's going to be outgoing and do a great job. So that's my, that's my proposal to you. If, if you want to run with it, take it wherever you want to go.
Okay, appreciate that. So it's interesting that we have former Mayor Krantz out here. I, I used to watch him from that seat squirm over here on this decision. Catherine Blakeshire is mayor, same thing, many, many, it's hard because we have some great qualified youth and at all levels. And I think I'll go back to Catherine and one, I remember one night where we had similar type of position where we were trying to pick. They were, the council was trying to pick too. And I think in this case, I will go with, I, I like your suggestion, actually. I'll go with the incumbent because they're in their last year of eligibility. You're very early and please, you can attend now. And, and then we will explore in August the idea of an alternate, which will give you full voting and speaking. But at this point, and it is hard, it is very hard being up here, trying to make the decision of choosing which person gets onto all the commissions, but the youth commission in particular, because the window of opportunity for our youth is right then and there over a handful of years. In this case, I have had some interaction with, with the current youth commission, the incumbents. This is one of the most effective youth commissions I've seen. I think you'll enjoy when you do get there. I encourage you to go to the meetings in the meantime and, and listen. I think you'll find it a very inclusive group. They'll, they'll welcome you there even as a informal attendee. We have our informal attendees that, for city council meetings that are very active and influential in what we do. And I hope you can do that. And then sometime I, hi, I'm going to, almost quoting Catherine Blakeshire and probably, probably you too, Tony. I highly encourage you to reapply next year formally, you know, at the regular, when is the regular reappointment opening?
So we do it typically April, May, so we make reappointing in May.
So mark your calendar for April. Be sure to get that application in on that, what we did in that first round. And, you know, I, I think your presentation was excellent. You sound very confident and just keep up, keep up the good work. This time I'll go with, with Miles. And then, but also ask that we agendize in August sometime the possibility of modifying the municipal code with language for alternates, some number of alternates.
Yes, thank you. So I'm just looking at the calendar. So staff will bring back an item to change the municipal code on the 13th. This is an ordinance change, so we'll have a first reading on the 13th. It'll be heard two weeks later on the 27th and then it goes into effect 30 days from then. But as you had said, there are public meetings and you are definitely more than welcome so that you're caught up. And when, if and when council appoints you alternate, you would then be, you'd be ready to go.
Can you guys imagine him here in four years, what would he be doing at that podium? Oh, man.
Well, and I would just
That's exciting.
I would assume, just for clarity, that if we bring back the ordinance, it's to allow a certain number of alternates and then we would have to have an application process for people to apply for that.
Yeah.
Alternate positions.
Absolutely, go through and advertise. And it's interesting because I see Oliver Pratt here tonight of L7. And both Oliver and Lars, you both have spoken more clearly and less nervously than I did my first time at that podium. So you did well.
You did better than me.
So with that, I think, I made a motion. Do I have a second on?
Second.
Okay, I got a motion in a second.
I'm sorry, who was the second?
Well, I made the motion. Jim seconded.
And then actually, I'll just make one more comment on that. It does help having an alternate for the youth commission because typically it's such a short term. You know, they start in September, they conclude in June. So typically if there is someone that has to drop off for some reason, we don't fill that vacancy. So this way, someone could just, we could have, you're the first alternate, second alternate. So you would have that
And to be clear, an alternate, if there was a vacancy that night, would vote that night on any action and then speak and vote.
As soon as there's a vacancy, the alternate would move right in.
Yeah, okay. So with that motion in a second, no other comments? Call the question?
And that motion does carry unanimously.
Great. Thank you. Let's see. Do we need, can we do B, 10B, and then try for a break after that? Cool.
Do you have five speakers?
Five speakers on B? Okay. We'll start with, so item 10B is an acceptance of a donation of $10,000 from Glenn Johnson for the future park at, 100? What's that? Oh, I'm sorry, what did I say, 10,000? You're right. 100, thank you. Luckily, I didn't go the other way, you know? For 100,000, thank you. For Glenn Johnson, from Glenn Johnson, for the future park at the L7 property and name a pavilion or similar park amenity in honor of Sally Johnson for a minimum of 10 years. And the contact person is the Director of Parks and Rec and Culture, Director Knop.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson is here tonight. Mr. Johnson has been an active community member in the action of preserving the land known as L7 as a future park. And that support, Mr. Johnson is, is offering to donate $100,000 toward this future park in honor of his late wife, Sally Johnson. I appreciate the opportunity I've had to talk with Mr. Johnson and learn about his wife. We had a very nice coffee tea morning and I appreciate that, thank you. And following the city's donation policy, F0
And following the city's donation policy F007 and the naming of city land facilities and amenities policy CO30, it is my duty to make a recommendation with the support of city admin and the Park and Recreation Commission. I recommend accepting the donation of $100,000 for the park so that we may have additional amenities. I recommend naming a significant amenity, like a picnic pavilion, in honor of Sally Johnson for a minimum of 10 years. Mr. Johnson is here today and has shared with me that he believes the park amenity naming should be for 25 years. And I believe you'll speak to that, and I appreciate that. I would say that city policy does not have a set number. So you had me looking at money and years and coming up with a recommendation of 10. That is not a required number or a policy-based number. So any questions, I would gladly take.
Any questions of clarification? Public?
There are five speakers. I'll call you three at a time. First three speakers, Glenn Johnson, followed by Tony Krantz, and then Dick Stern.
Glenn Johnson, resident of near Quail Gardens Drive, council, staff, and friends and neighbors. The city is working to preserve the L7 site as a public park, and I think there's some steps needed yet. And the neighborhood is very grateful for this. Design and construction of the park will take some community involvement and some amount of time, probably more time than you'd believe. My offer of $100,000 to name this park for my late wife Sally Johnson has served to help launch this effort. I need to give you some facts here. Sally's parents were very poor Polish immigrants in Chicago. And Sally did not even speak English until she started parochial school. Later on in life, she did very well in business and then in Chicago, and then moved to Rancho Bernardo where she worked for a long time at a big tetage company. And she was very well rewarded for her services. When we were introduced, it was love at first sight. I thought she was beautiful. And we were married, and we bought a house together, a brand-new house. When she passed on, she left her retirement account and her life savings to me. Some of her life savings went to her sister and brother. One thing I've learned, and I wanna share with the community, is that in life, nothing lasts forever, nothing. My initial offer to name the entire park may have been kinda greedy, and the city has proposed naming of a pavilion as a major feature of the park. This seems reasonable and legal. However, I request that the period for the pavilion name be at least 25 years. At my age, I will not last another 25 years, but I will be around as long as I'm able to visit and enjoy the park. I'd like to thank you for considering my donation. I've mentioned that I have heard offers from other citizens to donate money for the park. And as an independent effort, a young man has also raised some money for the park. Again, thank you for considering the donations.
Thank you.
Good evening, Tony Krantz, Encinitas. And I am here to wholeheartedly endorse the staff recommendation and would encourage you to increase the time to at least 25 years, and I think in perpetuity would be even better. I've known Glenn for quite some time. I've known him to be a very generous man with his time. A year ago, he came forward with the proposal, the offer, to contribute $100,000. And I was proud to have put a council member-initiated item on the agenda a year ago in order to begin the process that we're getting to right now. I think that it is appropriate, and I would also encourage others in our community to make contributions towards this park. I had the privilege of participating in the development of Olympus Park. That was a piece of land that was part of the, I think it's, I heard you do it, Sierra And it was a mitigation land that sat fallow for way, way too long. And so the park that was developed there has turned into a little bit more active use than I think was initially envisioned. And I know that Glenn was talking about a passive-use park at L7. And so my expectation is that maybe you can get somewhere in between. I look forward to participating in the public conversation about the type of park that will go on this property, if it does get built into a park. The one thing that I'm struggling with, though, is this recent effort. There was the MOU that was suggested by a nonprofit that would be a fiscal agent for contributions like this. And I don't understand why we wouldn't embrace that. We wanna encourage that. But there was some suggestion that there were conflict of interest from these members. And I've tried real hard to understand what makes raising money for city programs create any kind of conflict of interest with commissioners. So my hope is that you will address that soon, and a MOU can be put in place. We can save Glenn some tax liabilities. I believe Oliver's got some money that he wants to contribute. And I'd hate to see a young fellow like him get in trouble with the IRS, so he's young, so he could use a nonprofit to funnel his golf ball money. I have a great deal of certainty that some of the golf balls that he sold, I contributed to the water. So in the meantime, I appreciate everything that you guys are doing here tonight.
And then following, Mr. Stern will be Jessica Pratt and then Oliver Pratt.
Good evening, honorable mayor and city council members. My name is Dick Stern. I'm the president of the Encinitas Ranch Community Association, an HOA of 500 homes that adjoins Quail Gardens Drive. I'm here tonight to offer our community's support for accepting a donation from Glenn Johnson to help support the development of a city park on the parcel of land known as L7. It's only fitting that the city accepts this offer. It is through his efforts and many others in neighboring communities and our city council members that we collectively have been able to designate and fund a city park that is desperately needed in this area. By accepting this donation, we all ensure that the memory of Glenn and his wife, through their generosity, will live on for many years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we go together? It's more efficient.
Sure.
All right. Good evening, council and mayor Ayers, Oliver Pratt, Jessica Pratt, nice to see you. It was Glenn Johnson's incredibly generous $100,000 offer to our former council that brought this proposed housing development on this irreparable parkland to a sudden halt. And today, we want to express our deepest thanks to Glenn, not only for his contribution, but for the inspiration it sparked in Oliver and so many others in our community. His action empowered neighbors of all ages to stand up, to speak out, and protect one of the few remaining spaces we have left in Encinitas. Well, there's not much land left. So thank you, council. Thank you to Glenn. May Sally Johnson's memory live on through the community park that will soon take root in Encinitas, built by and for the people who love this wonderful city.
I also, oh, where is that? I also want to say thank you, Mr. Glenn Johnson, and you are mayor and city council members, saving our community park for me and my friends and neighbors and our entire community. And I can't wait to play there soon. Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
That concludes public speakers. And then we did have one speaker, Molly Hintlin, who is registering support but did not wish to speak.
Okay. And with that, we'll go to deliberation. I've got Deputy Mayor Lyons up first.
Well, thank you, Glenn Johnson, for this very generous donation to the L7 park. I just wanted to say that, to say thank you. And I'd like to say, if there's a way we can help somehow with the taxes, as Tony talked about, in regards to when a person donates to the city, there may not be some tax benefits. But if you donate through a nonprofit, there may be some tax benefits. So I'm in favor of supporting that. I wanted to, though, also talk about, kind of help, I have a vision for what I think would honor your wife Sally Johnson. And I just wanted to share that because when we all talk about parks, we may have something different in our mind. And I know we haven't really gone down the road yet of talking about, what does the public wanna see on this property, and how is this park going to evolve? But I think it's really novel and special to have a citizen donate a significant amount of money. And I would, and I think the community, the neighborhood, wants a park here that is a quiet place to go, that is walkable from their homes, that doesn't generate more traffic necessarily, that we don't need to asphalt for parking, that is really embraced by the surrounding community, and there to be a resource for the surrounding community. So when we list that, we're talking about maybe it could be a pavilion, and we'd honor Sally Johnson's pavilion, what I see is that pavilion would be the centerpiece of the park. That sometimes you look at a park and you go, oh, there's a Ramada, there's a Ramada, you know? But I wouldn't, I would like us to really focus on keeping the programming of this park gentle, and keeping it focused on the walkable community around it. And the centerpiece being Sally Johnson Pavilion, where people come with their families, multi-generations, grandparents, children, to gather, a place to bring the family and tell stories, really encourage the community aspect. And I think that would be a lovely acknowledgement. So I just wanted to share that I don't see this as just one aspect of the park. I see this as the centerpiece of the park.
Councilmember O'Hara.
I'm very pleased to hear your change of thought on this process, because I remember you sitting down there when Glenn first said he'd submit money, you saying, no, we need housing. So I'm really glad to hear you've come around, you feel that the park is more important than housing. It makes everybody here so happy. I, you know, I look out here, and I see, I call them the heroes of L7. I see Jessica Oliver, Dick, and Glenn. I would give you 25 years without the donation. You, the heroes, stood there when council said, we're gonna put shovels in the ground. You said, not on our watch. And you made this happen. You didn't let them do it. You stood there at that podium, you poured out your heart, you talked about, you started about a snake. You so generously put your money where your mouth is. So few people have the courage to do that in this world, this day and age. I'm, you know, I'm gonna support the 25 years. If it's, if we can't decide on the money tonight because we wanna help with taxes, I think we do the 25 years with or without the donation. You're a hero in this, in this park, in this, in the city. And I think as part of building the park, the residents will have a lot of say, and they'll be happy to support Sally Johnson's name going on whatever feature we deem to be the prize of it. And I think, I would love to propose going forward that we honor all the heroes of L7, or Quail Gardens Park. So in some manner throughout that, those who donated and those who were just brave enough to stand at that podium and make this happen. Thank you so much for everything.
Councilmember, Councilmember San Antonio.
I love this story. Maybe I'm a helpless romantic, I don't know. But I love the story. I, I mean, who doesn't love something that's, it's sparked from your love, and then here you are trying, wanna keep her name up there in perpetuity, possibly. I'm in support of it. I love my wife so much. If that's possible, I would, how long are park benches allowed to, how long are park benches allowed to be?
That's a good question. I don't know what the policy is.
Is it in perpetuity? You just have a park bench and you donate money?
You actually do buy a park bench? It's, you buy it outright? So you actually pay the full cost there, you know, anywhere between $2,000 and $3,000? And yes, that is your bench forever because you paid for the full cost.
Well, I think that this could be in perpetuity.
Well, until, yes, until, of course, it no longer exists because, you know, maybe it's been 50 years, but, and depending on where it is, but yes, that is yours.
All right, well, I love my wife, you love your wife. I think that this could be longer than 25 years, if you ask me. I mean, it's, this is, why not? You love your wife so much. This story is just amazing to me. I love it. I propose longer than 25, in perpetuity, until this pavilion breaks down and withers away.
Councilmember Schaefer.
I echo 100% of what's being set up here. And I, 25 years in perpetuity is what the motion I'll make.
25 years?
In.
Or in perpetuity. It's an or, I think.
Is it?
You could say at least 25, I think is what Dave Bump said, but.
I just, I have concern about saddling future city managers and councils with.
To the Pavilion? It's not the name of the park, it's to the Pavilion.
To the Pavilion, just to be careful, you know? If you do it long enough, it becomes in perpetuity because it becomes the name.
Name, of course.
And that's my goal. And of course, there'll be a plaque there, that type of stuff, to help it. But contractually obligating in perpetuity, I think, is maybe impractical, is all I would say. 25, 50 years, you know? I'm definitely for the 25, but I'll let you continue with your comments, if you have any more.
Yeah, I don't, like you said, once it becomes it, it doesn't really change. There's stuff that doesn't even have the official name, and it's called that anyway.
Yeah, and that would be the goal.
I'll just say in perpetuity, because in 25 years, I don't think anybody will remember to some level how it got there, but I'll say in perpetuity, just because that's what I think it should be.
Yeah. And I, too, really appreciate all the parties involved, and Glenn, your offer, I've told you this, I thought you were key to the focal point that became getting this park a park. And Oliver, you know, you did the, you added to that in so many ways, in such a great way. So as far as, I wanna talk about a couple of things here. The public discussion of what the park use will be. So right now, we don't have a design, and we do need to keep that as a public process. So what feature, I don't know if we can contractually commit to tonight, but I think in concept, come on up if you wanna comment on.
I'd like to comment. The normal way the city does things seems like you would hire a architect or a designer to survey the nearby community to see what amenities they want in the park. And then based on that, they would draw up a rough plan for the park. That's a starting point. My original approach had been, let's call it a park right now, and let's put in some picnic benches and parking lot, and leave the weeds there, and let the path develop through the weeds, and plant some trees in the back and water them. But the city's way of doing things is much more expensive and much better in the final result.
Well, ultimately, we have to do the second one, no matter what. And we need the public input. So I just wanna make sure that where we're going, we don't know the exact composition of the park, whether it's all passive, whether it's a mix of passive, pavilion, centerpiece, parking lot, no parking lot, et cetera. And that is part of the public process that we, the city, will kick off with the funding that we, that the council gives. So the second thing is about a 501(c)(3) where you can get a tax advantage. The current, the one that we're talking about, that we have talked about, actually has its roots, it was called Patrons of Encinitas Parks. It's the same nonprofit that it was then, and it was formed to accept money for McPherson Park. And that's how we got McPherson Park. It was Steve Fitch and some others that started Patrons of. It was Steve Fitch and some others that started Patrons of Encinitas Parks, has gone through several name changes over the years, and it's been funding various different parks. So nothing in the MOU is preventing that mechanism from working today, it worked 25 years ago, and so we can, we can still work that. So I would ask that whatever contract we write, or whatever we have to do for this to accept this, that we work so that Mr. Johnson's donation can come through a 501(c)(3) of his choosing, and we could then both get the full advantage of the funds and he can get some tax advantage out of it, and I think that's separate from what we're doing here tonight, other than to say that, I, you know, I'm not trying to put it through anything or not put it through anything, and I'm, I'm in supportive of the 25 or 50-year rights, just because I don't want to saddle, I don't want it to be a history lesson to have to go back and find some archaic scroll, no, by then it'll be a digital record of what the agreement said, and so I, there's some value in having things time out, but my goal is to have it used in the name Sally Johnson for the pavilion, and it be the Sally Johnson Pavilion, and now, and 50 years from now, and 75 years from now, people are still calling it that, and so, you know, it doesn't mean we take, you know, wipe the name off at the end and change it to something new, you know, it's not like Jack Murphy Stadium, and so...
So 50 years, so a motion to move for naming of 50 years.
So, okay, yeah, I was, okay, I was, and that's basically approval, to, approval that the city manager and director of parks can accept the donation on this, on our behalf, on the council's behalf, and, and give them direction to proceed with the detailed arrangements with naming rights for 50 years.
I'll second.
Well, I think you, I'm just, yeah, okay, so a motion is second, and then I'll yield to Councilmember O'Hara.
So I, I don't think we have a mechanism set up with an MOU with specifics unless some things changed, so I think we'd have to look at that. The Patrons of the Park, it's not Patrons of the Park anymore. So I, I think what we have to, we're voting on two different things here, right, and I think we, I think, I'd like to make this two, two motions. First motion is about the name, second motion's about the donation, and I think the first motion should be to commit to the 50 years naming, naming rights of, of a large item in the park, and I, and I do think it's, I do disagree with you, I think we're losing our culture, that's part of what this park is about, right, where it's, we're being built up, we're being stacked and packed, and traffic is being dropped on us, and what people love about here is the way of life, and if we don't give them those reminders, those stories of what's great about this place, it'll disappear, and it'll be gone forever, and so I do think it's important to make sure that, hey, there is a history lesson that goes along with this. History lesson is, these brave people stood up when council was going to put shovel to the ground and said, not on our watch, and that's what, because that's what Encinitas are, right? They're the people who are, they're going to do it, you can't tell them no, they're going to make it happen, the right thing, and, and that's part of our culture, and so I think the story, if we had to tell it, I'll stand there and tell, I want to, instead of going to Walmart when I retire, I'll go stand at L7 and I'll tell people about this history of this, this great park. So I do think it's important, because I think the story to mark, to Councilmember San Antonio's point is, is such a big portion of the overall picture. So, so my motion is to give him the 50 years regardless of the donation, I think we need to vet out, I don't hear that we have an MOU with somebody that sets up to do this, I know we had a discussion about it and there wasn't, so...
Yeah, and I think I'd ask the city manager to speak, but I don't believe we even need an MOU to accept the donation.
Okay.
Yes, thank you Mayor Lairs, Councilmember O'Hara, I will work with the finance director and our city treasurer to figure out the best way that Mr. Johnson can donate the money and get as much benefit as we can, so if you would allow myself and the finance director to work with Mr. Johnson, we'll be happy to figure out the best way that we can accept that, and again, see if there's any benefit, but if you would direct us to work on that, that would be great.
There's a substitute motion, 50 years, naming rights, and the city will, the city manager and staff will work to find a solution to the $100,000 donation.
Okay, do we have a second on the substitute motion? So I have a motion and a second, and another substitute, it's popular night for substitute motions, if you haven't noticed.
What's the substitute motion, it's the same motion I had?
No, it is an independent naming rights in perpetuity without a donation.
Without the donation.
And then you agree, agreeable, agree to accept the donation, but the city manager will figure out the vehicle with which...
Oh, okay, so you add it to it?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Yeah, second that, yeah. I, I just amend the first motion, but okay, sure, whatever, it's the same, it's the same damn thing, so yes.
And I think it's in perpetuity now, also.
It's 50 years.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, 50 years, okay.
Can I just like give clarity on that again? So it was a substitute motion, and that is for the naming, to accept the naming rights for 50 years with or without the donation?
Correct.
Separate from?
And then it was direction to the city manager?
To establish the means to accept the donation.
On behalf of the city council.
Correct.
And could I just get clarification, I may have missed a point, without the donation? What was that?
With or without.
With or without?
The donation's coming, I don't know why.
I believe, I believe we should name something after his wife in the park regardless, if he decides he wants to pull a donation, I'm still going to be up here saying, let's name something in the park after Sally Johnson.
Yeah, I don't know, we're arguing over, we're going to, he wants to give the money, we're going to accept the money.
He wants to give the money.
Like, it's going to happen, so I don't, yes, to answer your question, yes, let's call the question.
Wait, before we call the question, we want to be careful, we're in compliance with our naming convention policy?
So yeah, I just want to make sure, we do have a naming policy on how we name things, so generally, it talks about why we name things, and generally, when naming after someone, it's usually because of a significant, either, it says here, a donation or a gift, so we generally have not named something for no reason, we've usually, it's either some type of historical, a landmark, but usually, so I just want to make sure we do have a city naming policy.
I would argue it is historical, historical, historical story of our culture and how we got this park.
Yeah, so I just want to, historical relevance, geographic location, geographical features, community identity, significant financial contribution, or degree of community support, so you could name it for those things.
I go back to the original motion was very similar with that, that distinction that I, I think, if Sally had been involved and been up here, it would have been different, but it was Glenn, and so I, I would really prefer to go with the original motion, that was what the proposal, it's what the parks and rec accepted, I, yeah, so, we can vote on it, or, or if you want to, you could withdraw the, the substitute motion, either way.
We're still going the, it's not 10 though now, it's still 25 or 50, it's...
Yeah, it needs, it needs to be 50 on the, motion on the floor.
I have, I have that, because I have two different motions going.
Okay, I don't know which one we're looking at now.
I'll withdraw mine if it's, if it's simpler to, to go with the first one and change it to 50.
Yeah.
Okay, so this substitute's withdrawn, so then the motion on the floor is going to be Schaefer in San Antonio, which was to accept the donation of $100,000 from Glenn Johnson, and approve a future naming of a significant park amenity like a pavilion at the future park at L7 for a minimum period of 50 years.
Correct.
Yep.
So I'm going to go back to that one, let me just once...
And call the question at this point?
Yeah, I'm just going to get to the right one for voting.
Yeah, so we only have a motion and a second on the floor, we no longer have a substitute motion, correct?
Right, the system has two, so I'm trying to make sure I get the right one.
We have to do the computer work to catch up.
There we go, where did it go? Sorry. Well, I'll go ahead and take the vote, and then I'll fill it in when this thing turns back on. Councilmember San Antonio?
Aye.
There we go, sorry, of course.
You going to do roll call, or do you want us to vote on the screens?
Actually, you can vote on the screen.
Okay.
Motion carried to the House.
And that was it on that item, so, break now, can we, want a break? Okay, we're going to take a 10-minute break, and I mean a 10-minute break, so nine o'clock, if I get a quorum back here, we're starting.
Good job.
If we can come back to order here. Dennis? Let's see, we're on to item 10C. City of Encinitas to submit an application to the California Arts Council for recognition as a California cultural district under California Assembly Bill 189. And with that, contact person is Director Parks Knapp again.
Thank you. And for the presentation, I'll turn that over to Arts Manager Collette Murphy.
Thank you. Good evening. So here's just a little bit of information about the California cultural districts. The City of Encinitas applied in 2017. And there had originally been the intention by the California Arts Council for that program to continue every two years. The pandemic really interrupted everything. And it's now, this is the next round of applications for it. Little background, it was established through Assembly Bill 189. And it's a tool for developing, supporting, and the preservation of California's extensive and diverse cultural assets. The bill defines a cultural district as a defined area with concentrated cultural resources that attract creatives, drives economic development, preserves cultural sites, builds local cultural identity, and promotes equity without displacement. The 2017 pilot included an initial cohort of 14 districts that are highlighted here. The orange ones are rural, the blue are suburban, and the red ones are urban. You can see that there are five in San Diego County, I'm sorry, three in San Diego County. And those 14 districts received an initial $10,000 for the first two years in 2017. And then followed with $640,000 each in 2022. So the 2025 application timeline was, we received notification, it had been released on May 27. The application is due on August 7. It's a significantly shorter time period. It's gonna be a bit of a lift. Those sites that are designated as semifinalists will be visited in October and November. And new districts will be designated at the California Arts Council's December 12 meeting. For this application, an organizational partnership is required that at a minimum has a branch of government, a arts or cultural nonprofit or collective, and then also a business community development association. A one-to-one grant match is required, that can be either cash or in kind. And the evaluation criteria will include the strength of the partners, the community engagement and expected impact on the community, cultural asset communication within the designated district that's being proposed, budget clarity and vision, leadership, and the contribution to the statewide cohort. So not only the 10 new ones, but the existing 14. The question categories on the application are around centering equity and accessibility, the partnerships that are identified in the district, community engagement and social impact, and district vision and planning. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Go, I just wanted to add a couple more things from the conversations we had in briefings, too. And that is, Collette, myself, Collette's, and our team in the arts have been following the CAC's process for a while, going back to November, even before that. We've learned some interesting things recently, being on some of the phone calls with the CAC to learn more information about this process. And as we shared, what wasn't deeply in there was the impact or desire for affordable housing for artists to be part of it. It has been in some of the backgrounds, but has not been part of the requirement. Our recent phone call, there were comments that affordable housing being favored to artists as part of this, at least in a percentage, wasn't intentional. And that that was part of it and was valued. It was never too required, it's not required part of the application, but it was called out in the conversations that we've had. Also, there's no guaranteed funding, that was made clear to us beyond the $10,000. So $5,000 for each of the first two years, if we're selected as one of the 10. But there's no guaranteed money going forward. And the discussion in the phone call was, things are very challenging at the state level right now. And we should be aware of that in this process. Okay, any questions?
Any questions of clarification?
I just want to say thank you for that piece of information, because it does make a difference in this. And even though there's follow-on, possible follow-on funding, that it seems that it sounds like, at least from what we're hearing, that it's pretty, it might be closely tied to follow-on funding if we're not doing those other "not so required" portions, quote unquote. So, thank you for that part.
And I had a question about the $220,000. I didn't see that in the staff report. So what, can you explain more? Did each one of the initial recipients get $220,000 in addition to the original $10,000 in 2017?
In 2022, each of the 14 received an additional $640,000. There was a $10 million funding provided that was split between the 10 districts with a portion being used as an overall. And that was money that came at the state level, it was part of the state budget designated to the cultural districts. It is, was highly suggested, I was in Sacramento in April, and it was highly suggested even by those who strongly support the arts that there's just not likely going to be the kind of funding that there was available in 2022. They can't, they don't have a crystal ball, they can't tell us for sure. But that was the common theme that was shared with us.
So to be clear, I think was the prior to 2018, 19, 20, 21, $10,000 each year there, too?
No, it was just $10,000 given in 2017 to last for two years. And then the next funding came in 2022.
Okay. And did they have to reapply for that 20, 2000?
There was a report that was given, but they didn't have to reapply. They basically, their designation was continued.
Okay. And there was no additional competition or anything? It was suddenly there was money? And was there any discussion of the $222,000 back in 2017? That there might be a large grant split amongst the winners?
There was no guarantee at that time. It was only presented that there was, would be the $10,000 for the two years. And no certainty of any additional funding.
Wow. State acts in mysterious ways.
Yeah, just add, I mean, one of the benefits of this program is that the using it to, I use the word chase, but using the designation as a, as part of your grant request. When you go after grants, and being able to share that you are a designated cultural district has a value. And I think the state has shared that, you know, on and on and on. And then, you know, would point at the money in 2022 as being part of that process.
Okay. No other questions? Do we have public?
Of three, Karen Kayden, Dennis Kayden, and then Molly Hentley.
Good evening, Mayor Ellers, and Luke, and Jim, Marco, and Joy. Thank you for sitting here and listening to us. We are the residents, and we got things to say. And I want to say respectfully decline submitting an application to California Arts Council, which is a state-run agency who wants to control and set strategies with missions, visions, and values to rebuild California communities. Also wants cities to address the barriers to equity and participation to all. However, Encinitas already is a loving and sharing community, known as a beachy art town. We have forever, long time, support many artists who have given much creative expressive mission for all peoples to flourish and have participation. Encinitas is a responsible and impacted town that invites all to enjoy the stimulating creative art growth. We do not need designation. We already got it by other countries and towns and counties. I know my speech is a little short. I grew up with two artists. And I also have artists in my family. And we are for lovely art, and I think Encinitas is gonna flourish without this. I do not want to see... I want to keep local control. And my statement is, and keep state out. Thank you, gentlemen and ladies.
Good evening, Dennis Kayden, Encinitas. Thanks for being here. I just want to quote the written law for AB 812. I'm gonna kind of hitchhike on Karen's comments. So, quote, "Existing law requires the Arts Council to establish criteria and guidelines for certification of state-designated cultural districts and collaborate with other public agencies and private entities to maximize the benefit of state-designated cultural districts." "The planning and zoning law imposes various requirements on cities and counties with regards to their review and approval of certain housing developments. This bill would authorize a city or county that requires, as a condition of approval, that the certain percentage of units of a residential development be affordable housing," whatever that means. "As specified, to reserve for artists up to 10% of those required affordable housing units, except as provided if certain conditions are met, including that the units reserved are located within or within one-half a mile of a state-designated cultural district, or within a locally-designated cultural district as specified." "The bill would include findings that change proposed by this bill address a matter of statewide concern rather than municipal affairs," that would be us locally, "and therefore apply to all cities, including charter cities." "I have a fear that whatever we do, if we get involved in this, fellows like our California Senator Scott Wiener will come up with some way to destroy our downtown look." I agree with Karen 100%. "Encinitas, on its own, has become a art center of world renown. And we should keep it that way so that you guys control what we do in the district and not get any interference from state whatsoever, and no matter how much money they give us." Thank you very much.
Good evening, Molly Hentley, District 2. On top of what Dennis just said, I oppose the recommendation. My concerns are, it's a state program with a lot of unknown stipulations, unknown money. And it sounds like it'll require lots of staff time and resources with rounds of site visits. I just don't feel like it's a priority for the city or a need right now. I think we heard earlier this evening, we have safety concerns. We don't need a plaque, we don't need a designation, we don't need to have the state determine a cultural district for us. Encinitas is already world renowned. Thank you.
Hello, Mayor, Council, Dave Dean, Dave's Rock Garden. Wasn't necessarily prepared to speak on this, but I did want to share some thoughts. I love, love, love art, and I love our community and what art brings to our community. The thing that I have concerns about is what restrictions the state may impose on us and what limitations it may possibly put on the creativity of the art in the community. And the freedom of expression and art in our community is second to none. We are probably the most creative art-influenced community that I'm aware of. And the artists in this community are unbelievable. So when you make your decision, please keep in mind that you gotta have an open space for artists to create without the limitations that the state may impose on that. So keep that in mind, is the creativity of the artists that needs to drive this, not the mandates of the state. Thank you.
Okay, with that, I've got Councilmember O'Hara.
Okay, just for clarification. Part of the reason this is coming to us right now is because the deadline was rushed up on
is because the deadline was rushed up on us sooner than we expected. Yes, I mean, the, 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 the opening of the application and the deadline came us May 27th, it's due August 7th. So, we have to work, we're coming to you because to make this work, if we were to apply, we'd have to know now. So, Councilmember, Deputy Mayor Lyons and I, we are on the Culture Arts Committee and Cultural Tourism Committee, where we talk about the cultural district a lot. And I've been asking since day, I think it was the second day I was here, it was in that, it was my, it was my meeting, and I've been asking since day one if this affects our zoning. And it sounds real murky and unclear, that is a good possibility that it will. And I fall back to just the line on here about reserving housing for artists. And I think back to every time someone said, "We need housing for our firefighters, our sheriffs, and our teachers," and yet, it's impossible to do that. See, housing law doesn't let you do that. So, so it makes me very concerned that we're going to attach something that, that forces us to do something with a number of 10% attached to it and mandate affordable housing. I look at this project, and, and I've said this in the meeting, I don't think we have a complete project. Like, we're not there yet. Our zone that we have defined is from, what, La Costa Avenue down to Cardiff, and just west of the five. A, it puts the hair up on the back of my neck, because that just also happens to be this attachment of possible zoning and, or mandated housing and the most valuable real estate in the city, right? I also look at this project, and I look back to, you know, the, the information we have, and we're using 2017 information, we don't have a list ready, we don't have a clearly-defined district, whereas if you look at Oceanside, another city that's done this, an exceptional example for us, their district is so clearly defined, like, building by building, it's a very well-done district that I think we want to kind of focus on. And so, and I can dive deeper into this, but I don't want to take up a long time. I think it's pretty clear, this, this project's not ready. I'll end with, I think the, I support a cultural district in the city, and I think I've said that since day one, and I would love to see us do it. I don't think it's worth putting a bad project out for what appears to be a very small amount of money. I want to do this project and do it right when we get there, so that we can get a good return on investment, because to me, this is really a marketing opportunity. As far as grants go, we can reach out with our, some of our people who want to partner us, and look at tourism grants, we can look at working with hotel grants, and there are different ways to, to do this, rather than just be dependent on the state. And in our experience, when the state helps us, there's always something attached to it. So, I'm going to make a motion to not accept or not send in this application at this time, but to continue conversations about creating our own cultural art district. You know, even going back to the, the partners, partnership we need, we need government, nonprofit, and, and a, 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 business, business representative, right? They're so involved, they're not here. They don't have partners in it yet, right? So, it's just undefined, and it's a great project. I want to divide, I want to, I want to, to, to Dave Dean's point, I want to honor our artists in a way that is, that is organic to Encinitas, that gets the return on investment, because I think that's what will get us the return on investment that we're looking for, and I think it'll be something that can stand on its own. So, for that reason, I want to, I want to make a motion to send this back.
Councilmember San Antonio.
I, I agree. We have a very great arts, artists here. We've got murals, we, mural trail, we have sculpture, we have Dave's Rock Garden, beautiful, beautiful spot right by Moonlight Beach. I mean, I'm confident that we can, we can foster a thriving cultural district independently. I believe we can actually self-designate our arts district if we wanted, if we want to. But when it comes down to, I mean, shoot, we're part of our neighborhood voices, I, I just don't, I would, I would hate to give up local control if this is, if that's even a part of this, or if that, if we have, lose even a little bit of it. I, shoot, I got shell-shocked my first meeting about Quail Meadows, and I, I see how, how it affects our town right now, our city right now. I think now more than ever, we need to be vigilant about what's going on in our town. So, I second, I second Councilmember O'Hara's motion. And I agree, $10,000 is not a lot of money, and if, if there's a possibility that it might give us more, that local control still is a big deal for me, as it is with, I believe the city, or a lot of us here.
And I know we talked about, boy, the, the state-designated cultural district just seems like a minefield, an awful minefield, absolute, right? You know, you can tell, within a half-mile of the, they're extending control beyond the cultural district, you don't even get to have a hard line there, you, you have to, it's half-mile out. So, Oceanside, so one of the things I thought, oh, well, tonight I came in going, I was going to consider a self-designation, a local designation, except Karen, I think you shared, or Dennis, one of you shared with us the, that wording that said, "Within a half-mile of a state-designated district," it was Dennis? Okay. And, and "within, within a locally-designated," and if that, if those limitations occur, this is really turning out to be more of a zoning application than it is a state arts-cultural district-type application. So, first of all, I would like staff, and I don't know if Parks and Rec is the right one to respond, but the connection to the housing and the code that was cited by Dennis Kayden, is that part of 180, Bill 189?
Not that I'm aware of, and we can go deeper into it, but...
Yeah. And, and I'm going to bring Dennis back up, because what you presented, I thought, looked like part of a bill, and if you could come up and just show that evidence one more time, I think it's critical, because it actually changed where I was going with this. And I actually am now supporting the motion.
It's up here, Dennis.
Oh, it's up, it's up.
Dennis.
It's on the screen.
We've got it.
He beat you to it.
This is the actual...
Okay, go, put it, put it up there. I just want to know what you put up there, and is it part of Bill 189?
No.
No.
And how does it connect? That's a concern. Yeah, and, and so that, that you have the AB 812 line, and then you have the next paragraph, and the, would be the third paragraph that starts with "this bill," when you read the end of it, that, where it says, "Are located within or within one-half mile of a state-designated cultural district." Okay, I, I don't want to go there. But now, it says, "Or within a locally-designated cultural district." So, now, if I locally designate, I, I'm, I'm doing what I thought I was avoiding with the state, but it's opening the door. And so, this, this is Bill 812, and was it, so, and this is another burner? Are they, they're both burner? No, this is...
189 was Bloom.
Oh, Bloom, right, okay. So, if, if this applies, or if there's a risk of this applying to our locally-designated cultural district, I don't want either. I really don't want either, and I think that's what the motion is right now. Until we know better, table this, and whether we do it via motion or not, so I support that. Other comments? Yeah, $10,000 is so small. Whatever we do, we have an objective that we were investigating this, and the answer could come back that it's unpalatable to us, in which case, I think, even though the objective says apply for it, the answer may be that we don't want to, in which case, we terminate or complete that objective on our, our annual plan. So, with that, I will yield to Deputy Mayor Lyons.
Just real quick clarification on that. I think we took that line out to give us flexibility in the strategic plan. We took out the, the actual letter, writing of the bill, that was one of the requests. We took that out, just for clarity of the point.
Yeah, and, and on the current version, it does, it says, "Lead a collaborative effort with key community organizations to explore the official recognition of the City of Encinitas as a cultural district under the California Assembly Bill 189 by applying to the California Arts Council upon city council approval."
That's wording incorrectly, because we...
I agree with your comment, and what I'm pointing out here tonight is that we may want to go back and look at the record and, and correct that. When we review this again, we can update it.
Of course.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may, that is corrected in the version that is online, that is posted online. It does not say California Bill 189.
Good. Thank you.
So, I think information is evolving on this. There's been some information that's been clarified, just on the phone, talking to the state just recently. I think it's a sign that the program probably is not run very tightly. I think we've had a hard time getting, getting good information from the state on this. And so, here we find ourselves in this position. I, I just want to go on the record of saying I support affordable housing, and I support affordable housing for artists, and many of them in our community have come forward and have been interested in us exploring affordable housing options for artists and for others. So, I'll, I'll always support that. But I think that's contrary to where we wanted to go with a cultural district. It's just mixing too many things that I hear my colleagues are, are concerned with. And so, I think that it would, I, I wouldn't be opposed to looking at a local district or, or kind of even backing off and trying to inform ourselves even better, what is the nexus here with the state and cultural districts? I think it goes back to the question, one of my colleagues may have had, maybe it was Councilmember O'Hara, about, is this a zoning thing? How does this impact zoning? And until we know that, I don't know that we'll be comfortable making a decision to move forward. But I, I want to vet that, because if there's a way we can move forward with acknowledging a cultural district and really celebrating that, and perhaps finding grant sources for money to help us with some improvements for streets or signage, or things that we really want to capture, things that we want to do, then I would still be interested in crafting a cultural district locally. So, I hope that we don't stop talking about this, but maybe it's a way to take this one step and address the issue that seems to be raised tonight. What's, what is the connection with housing here? Would, would we be able to ask staff, as a, as a matter of this motion, to follow up and give us a report on that, so that we can be clear on, if we even do a local cultural district, what is that connection with, with zoning and housing?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Deputy Lyons, we can definitely do that, we could bring that back, we would definitely want Development Services to weigh in, so I look at that as a team effort, so the item would then be brought back with not only Park Rec and Cultural Arts, but we would have Development Services, so they could let us know how that would affect zoning or how these bills. You know what else we'll do, too? We do have a legislative consultant, so I'm going to go ahead and direct Deputy, Deputy City Manager Roy Spoutu to talk to our lobbyists to make sure, and to see if there's any other bills that have to do anything. I'm going to have him scour local cultural districts to see if there's anything else that we may be missing as well, so when we come back with the item, it's thorough, and you'll know if there's anything that may affect this.
If I could suggest that, then, as a friendly amendment.
And is it second or agree? To the friendly amendment for, yeah, okay.
Can I just get clarification on the motion that's on the table? I know it's to not move forward with the application.
Correct.
Then was it direction to staff?
To get clarity on the impact, or possible impact of zoning or housing.
Associated with local...
Cultural district, yeah.
With local, like a self, local self-designated cultural district.
Yes.
Or if we can just make sure that it's not part of it, when we make that cultural district, we just separate that part out and make sure that it's absolutely not a part of it. So, I strongly agree with the motion on the floor. I just want it to be on record that this is the kind of stuff the state is doing to us, and has been doing to us for, since 2017 with 400 bills, and so that, I hope every single department is aware of this, exactly what the state is doing. This is a 100% side door, back door, whatever you want to call it, pun intended to the person that is in charge of all of these things. So, it is in, it's a gross overreach of how the state is trying to infiltrate every which way they can by throwing out a dollar amount that helps people right now, especially with the needs of cities up against homelessness and whatnot, and all the different financial requirements. So, thank you, Director Knop, for finding that, bringing it to our attention, and absolutely being a part of helping us protect the, the community. So, thank you.
And Councilmember O'Hara.
No, I know, I, I think that was a great way to finish with what Luke said, you know, we appreciate the, the work of staff and the diligence to your answer. Ultimately, what, what is the make or break question on this right from the start, and to get some sort of information so we could make a decision on it. You know, I also know that Deputy Mayor Lyons, myself, the, the Cultural, Cultural Tourism Committee, the Chambers Tourism Committee, we all also understand why you are bringing this forward, why you, why you think we want to celebrate our artists, and, and I know that we are all still dedicated to figuring out the best way to do that. And, and so, even if we're sending this, or we're sending, we're not, we're not, we're sending this back to you and saying, no, we're not ready yet, I think this is a discussion, per Deputy Mayor Lyons' comment. I agree with her, I think we need to keep moving this discussion forward at the benefit of the city, as opposed to at the risk of the city. And so, I appreciate everybody's hard work, and I think this is a great outcome. I hope it's a great outcome when we vote.
Yeah. And I have one last comment, and it's about the concept of pre-designating low-income housing by vocation. I oppose that vehemently. I think that is absolutely uncalled for. I think if you're low-income and you qualify, then, then you should all go in a pool, and we should all work towards having equal opportunity, random equal opportunity, no sweet deals with developers or whatever. But, you know, how do you define an artist? Wow. I, I just, practically speaking, it's already a complex process to determine where people are versus AMI, and what their assets are, and what their income is, and then to throw in there, well, okay, 10% of your, 15% of your, of your housing will be low-income for artists, and then I presume the rest would be for artists and anybody that applies, and I, I don't ever want to go there, period. I think it is not equitable. I think, I think, I want equal access and even some randomness, and I think that's one of our work plan items in the future, is to, to talk about how we allocate low-income housing. And, and so, I just wanted to throw that comment out there. So, as we go down, as staff looks at this, you also answer the question, what's an artist when you're talking about what they mean by this? This sounds like a well-intentioned law that, that is running amok, so...
Really bad background intentions. I will say, when we did the Capania, when, they do a good job of actually trying to pay artists in full while trying to donate art to the city, and they were the ones that were trying to do the, the mural in Pacific View. And so, I think, I think we already kind of naturally, you know, Dave already hit on it, we already kind of naturally come with a lot of artists. I think it's allowed, a way for us to create a program where if people want to donate their, not say donate, donate their art, but get paid in full through whatever means can, can, you know, the donations or whatever, I think the city would absolutely love it in that regard, so...
Okay. And I don't see any other comments, so let's call the question.
That motion does carry unanimously.
And with that, we will move on to 10D, I, or one? And with that, I think...
I need to recuse myself from the first portion of this, of 10D, because my company pulls special event permits here at the city, so I'm going to remove myself from the chamber.
So, I think we can proceed. So I think we can proceed?
Before Julie starts, I'll just, just for clarity, this is a continued public hearing, so the public hearing is currently open, and it remains open from June 18th.
Okay. Thank you. So this is a report where the staff recommends that the city council adopt Resolution 25-76 titled, A Resolution, City Council, City Council of the City of Encinitas Amending the Parks and Recreation Special Events Fees. This is part one. Going back to 2021, the city hired a consultant for a citywide fee study. The recognition in that fee study was, fees had not been updated in a timely fashion, basically, and some park and recreation fees, you were 20 years without an increase. City Council adopted Resolution 2359 in June 2823, which basically said, we'll come and have a public hearing to approve an annual fee adjustment, instead of looking for an overtime, based on the previous year's CPI, Consumer Price Index for the San Diego region. Last year, June 12, 2024, that CPI was 5.1, and City Council adopted the resolution increasing the user fee. Excuse me. Funding for Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Arts, as we go into Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Month. We fund parks, beaches, and trails maintenance and improvements, recreation facility maintenance and improvements, furniture, fix and new, fixtures and equipment, service and maintenance contracts, our parks look fantastic, full and part-time staff, community partnerships through MOUs and other ways, senior services, and special events. The CPI for 2024, the year we look back, is 3.1, so 2% less than last year. And so that would be the ask, or recommendation for the increase, this is for special event fees, 3.1%. Gladly answer any questions.
Any questions? Any public comments?
There are no public comments.
No public comments. So we can close the public hearing?
No, no. The public hearing is open.
Oh, because it's the second one. We'll keep it open?
Where's my second?
Okay, fair enough.
You're very good with the buttons.
Oh, that's right.
Nothing to disclose.
Nothing to disclose.
Nothing to disclose.
I'd like to move staff recommendation of approval of this item.
Second.
All right. Who seconded that?
I did.
You did? Okay, so Marco San Antonio. And any further discussion? Call a question.
Councilmember O'Hara is standing to the council chambers.
So, okay. Proceed with the next one.
Kind of like Groundhog Day here. Staff recommends that City Council adopt Resolution 2557, titled, A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Encinitas, amending the, amending the amending of Parks, Recreation, and User Fees, excluding special event fees. So 2021, the city worked with, hired a consultant to look at citywide fee studies, and discussion at that time was, fees had not been upcap, had been 20-plus years of any increase, so instead of a timely movement of fees to keep up with costs, we were forced in a situation to bring cost up. In that process, City Council in 2023 adopted a resolution approving an annual fee adjustment, instead of that big fee, based on the previous year's Consumer Price Index for the San Diego region. Last year, June 12, 2024, City Council adopted the resolution, increasing user fees by 5.1, the CPI for the year before. Park and Recreation Cultural Arts Funding does a lot of amazing things and makes the city the special place that it is. It funds parks, beaches, and trails maintenance and improvements, recreation facility maintenance and improvements, furniture, new repair, fixture and equipment, service and maintenance contracts, our full and part-time staff, community partnerships, senior services, and special events. And last year, the CPI was 3.1%. And so the ask is to increase those fees by that percentage, 3.1. Gladly answer any questions.
Okay, are there any questions from council? No? And can we disclose any information we received that's not included in the staff report?
Nothing to disclose.
Nothing to disclose.
Nothing to disclose.
Nothing to disclose.
And I have nothing to disclose. No preliminary questions? Do we have public speakers?
There are no public speakers.
We have no public speakers? Now I can close the public...
Now you can close.
Yeah, okay. And council discussion in action.
Move to approve motion as recommended.
I'll second that, and I want to applaud staff for, when you read through these fees, keeping it, the increase is very small, and focusing on what I consider keeping it, everything available and affordable to our residents. I know that you run a lot of budget numbers, and it's a tight budget in your department sometimes, so we appreciate your consideration for the residents. If you don't mind, if I could just point out, Julie and her team do, our admin section do such a fantastic job, thank you very much.
Well done. So with that, anything else, Councilmember O'Hara?
I'll yield the floor, sorry.
Okay, no. And with that, we'll call a question.
That motion carries unanimously.
Okay, that takes us on to the next item on the agenda, which is informational, we have none. Councilmember initiated, we have none. And so, council member reports pursuant to AB 1234.
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report.
Have a great recess.
This morning, I attended the Encina Wastewater Authority Board meeting.
As did I. And that, so now we're on to city manager report?
Okay, I promise we'll be out of here well before 10:00. But just, I wanted to say, because we are going on break, we do have the Fourth of July holiday upon us next Friday, so I wanted to let you know that Fire will be increasing their staffing levels for the lifeguards. We do plan on having a very busy Fourth of July, Fourth of July is on a Friday this year, so with the weekend, we plan on having a lot of extra visitors and beachgoers and our residents there, too. So we'll have additional equipment and apparatus also staged at Moonlight Beach for quick responses. I also found out from the Sheriff's Department, they'll be doing several things. So beginning July 4th, they will actually deploy deputies to our beaches, they are on ATVs and they go out there, they make sure that, you know, people are complying with different laws, not drinking, not getting rowdy, things like that. Also, in the evening, they'll be in our downtown areas to make sure that, again, those areas stay calm and everything like that. Also, you know, we've talked about our roads and safety, they will have DUI saturation patrols. So again, if you do plan on celebrating our, you know, country's birthday, which is great, please be smart and use some type of designated driver or some type of ride-share as well. And then this year, I think this will be particular interest of Councilmember Schaefer, just because I know he likes drones. This year, in light of the recent wildfire activity, they will be deploying drones as part of their fireworks enforcement strategy. So they will be able to, from a central observation location, once the firework is detected, they will be able to do the visual identification and police reports, and then they can go find that. So that's very exciting, because again, we want to make sure that we don't start any fires here in Encinitas. And then lastly, I'd like to say, we do have a couple concerts coming up in July and August over at Moonlight Beach, and that's always a lot of fun for the community and our visitors. So just want everyone to be safe over our holiday break. I'm excited about the summer council break. And also, please remember, Hawaiian shirts, that's a tradition, so Hawaiian shirts on the first back. So for August 13th, wear your best Hawaiian shirt, grass skirt, flower lei, whatever you'd like. You know, I'm not, I'm not going to lie, ACM Schwarm said coconuts the other day, but I'm like, eh, you know, we'll just leave. If you want to bring a coconut to share, great. All right, so thank you very much.
City Attorney report?
No report this evening, Mr. Mayor.
City Clerk?
No report, just enjoy your break.
And with that, we are adjourned.